Do you want a little table out there to put it? Charlie?
Well, it's better than I have it near me. So I don't know. What do you, what would you rather do? Would you rather have it out here?
No, whatever works best.
Whatever works here at the professional here.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else to say right here.
Okay.
You got your mixtape, like?
Got lights on.
Okay, actually, yeah, it looks like it's in the works as far as film is concerned.
Is it picking up the mic on film but not in the room?
Yeah. Okay, so it's not going to get bright. Uh, yeah, it's bright, but everything's ready and, um...
So, public, if you want to hear, move up to the front row. We're raised for your hand if you can't hear and we'll try to speak louder. Okay, so we're ready to roll. I would like to call to order the South Burlington City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. I apologize for starting a little late, but we had a wonderful event beforehand to welcome in some two new firefighters and then Charlie needed to set up without disrupting that celebration, so we're starting a few minutes late. Our first item is the pledge of allegiance. So please stand. Tim, this is Thomas.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, the instructions are exiting the building in case of an emergency, please.
If we have an emergency this evening, please go out one of these two side doors. Go through the parking lot to the south and around the building immediately to the south and gather in the parking lot beyond that building. If these doors are blocked, please go back out through the lobby and out the main entrance in around the building and to that same parking lot beyond the building to the south. Tom Hubbard and I will make sure that the building is cleared, so if there's an emergency, please leave quickly.
Thank you. Agenda review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in order of agenda items? I would like to add one item to other business. I received a, an email from John Simpson. They have two openings on the Housing Committee and he was requesting, they have a couple candidates they would like to suggest, and he was asking, did we want to do a midterm kind of process again? So I just would like us to discuss that. It shouldn't take long, but...
I've got an update on that in my report, too.
Oh, okay. All right.
Also, we have some scheduling matters to talk about in other business, too. So just a couple, couple scheduling things.
So no other changes or deletions? All right, I'll move on to comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. Yes, Michael? Yeah?
My name is Michael Metag. I live in a PUD called Ridgewood, just off Smith Street. At your last meeting on February 11th, Jeff Davis and Jeff Nick delivered a letter to the council and others, and that letter contains statements which are misleading and, more importantly, which falsely accused the Open Space Committee of bias and self-interest. And I'll quote a few statements from that letter. The first is, "South Burlington is considering banning all development on their property at 850, 835 Heinsbury Road and many others." That is not true. I could say it's a lie, but it's not true. The Open Space Committee had an end result in mind when it designated these properties. That is not true. They were guided by personal self-interest rather than science and environmental preservation. That is not true. The committee started a wish list, with a wish list of open space parcels and subsequently commissioned a third-party scientific review to add window dressing to their ad hoc approach. That is not true. And they said they are not willing to throw out the hard work that they and the city have done based on the whims of a few individuals. That is, those are tough words and deserve a serious response. I think this council must publicly defend Professor Strong and the volunteer members of the Open Space Committee against these false accusations. Failing to do so, failing to defend these volunteers against such false accusations, which I think are calculated to intimidate people, will surely give South Burlington citizen volunteers cause to think twice before volunteering and exposing themselves to this kind of abuse. I have a letter for each of you, which I'll just give you to move, to move around. I don't expect a response from you now, but I hope to see something in the press or some public expression of disapproval and defense of the work of the Open Space Interim Zoning Committee, because it's really unfair to them. I have another item. I'm making a last-ditch plea to the council to change your view about having the Planning Commission focus on completing the four-year-old PUD project as its top priority during interim zoning rather than the TDR project. As I stated last week, if the TDR project is left to be completed after interim zoning, we will see a slew of development in the remaining open space in the SEQ. Rather than direct the Planning Commission to draft an entirely new TDR ordinance, perhaps they can be directed to focus on just the section on receiving and sending areas, which might accomplish what we need. And I think this would be the minimum necessary to honor the wishes of the community, of our community, to, to save open space. No open space will be saved by the PUD project, none at all. If it happens after interim zoning, it is new, new regulations, but it doesn't, it's not a conservation project. It's not a conservation tool, except insofar as perhaps what's called a conservation PUD might, might be seen as saving some open space, but it's still a development. So leaving until, leaving the PUD project until after interim zoning won't affect the amount of open space that we have or don't have, but leaving the TDR ordinance rewriting or amending until after interim zoning will definitely see us lose a lot of open space. So that's, it's a plea, and I think, not, not consciously, but I think you'd be misled in a way that the PUD is the be-all and end-all of interim zoning, and it's, it's used up, consumed a huge amount of Planning Commission time in these last couple of years, as has the Affordable Housing or rewriting, rewriting of the Affordable Housing or Inclusion Res zoning Law. So I can't, I can't be, I can't emphasize, emphasize enough how important this is, this TDR ordinance rewriting or amending. It is crucial if we want to save any open space, particularly in the, in the SEQ. And, you know, there would be a benefit for some landowners who, you know, who have NRP that if we expand the market outside, they'll have more places to sell their TDRs.
Thank you.
Please take it seriously.
You're going to give us that letter?
I'll give you that letter, yes.
Well, I think we all must have to agree on that. No, from...
Oh, we have...
Jeff Nick?
We have copies of that.
I'm giving you my letter.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, you're right.
If you have any questions...
No, at the last meeting, there was a pile of letters that, you know, but I didn't have time to read it during the meeting. We had gotten one by email from Evan ahead of time. Thank you.
So I printed all of them out.
I'm sorry, if you have any questions for me before I depart, now's the time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Any other comments? Roseanne?
My name is Roseanne Greco. I'm a resident of South Burlington. I have two comments to make. The first one has to do with the climate catastrophe we are in, and the second one has to do with city, city council committees that have been formed. So the first one has to do with the climate emergency we're in. I'm back. I told you I'd be back. I am going to assume that you all acknowledge human-made climate change and that you all are concerned about it. I know you are all good people that are, you know, concerned about your children, your grandchildren, and, and the kind of lives they will live. I'm here to ask you as city councilors to put your concern and your good intentions into action. Cities have a lot of power. They can do many things that individual citizens can't. So I'm asking you, suggesting to you, pleading with you, that you put into concrete action, no pun intended, things that will make a difference and help in our climate emergency. One thing I thought of, and I haven't done any research to see if this has happened in other cities, but I thought that perhaps getting a city committee dedicated to our climate emergency so that they would come up with ways that the city of South Burlington could do its part to at least cut back on the impact and maybe help the situation a bit, maybe they could do a mission statement, well, save the world, I guess, save the city first, but, you know, maybe assess every action, as I mentioned once before, every action that we take measured against what is its impact on climate change? Does it use fossil fuels? Can it be done a different way? Unless we take concrete action, we don't do anything. The words are there, but they're not put into motion. So that is what I am hoping the council will consider and, and maybe do in the future. The next thing has to do, it's pretty different, but in a way related, to the, the various city committees that we have. And I've been meaning to say this for a long time, and seeing that you're going to be talking about the charge to a, a city committee prompted me to, to make these comments to you. And that is, right now, I don't think there's any requirements to be on a city committee. I, I don't even think you have to be a resident of South Burlington.
You do have to be a resident.
Okay, all right, all right. But, I mean, you don't say, you know, are you an engineer? You know, are you a musician or whatever? You know, are you an ecologist? I mean, there's, there's no, there's no, and I don't, I'm not advocating that there is, except for one. And that is to see if the applicants, one, are aware of what the goal of that committee is, but better still, how strongly are they in support of that city goal or task or charge that the city council has put on that various committee? How dedicated are they to accomplishing the goal that's set before them? I say this because unfortunately in the past, we have had people on our committees that were opposed to the goal of that committee. And what, what happened then is the work of that committee was delayed, stymied, and sometimes just sabotaged. And so my question to you is, do you want those, i- is, is that important to you? That people on your committee are there because they want to work for the, the mission or the task put before them? I think that's very important because not having people like that can undercut what you're trying to do. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Can I just ask you a question in terms of the Climate Emergency Committee? It struck me that we have an energy committee that works on a lot of those same issues, and it, it sounds like it might be a little redundant. And perhaps the solution is if the council had a discussion is, you know, do you expand their view or ask them to...
Sure.
More than just, I don't know.
But of course, the energy committee, you know, they're terrific, but they're focused on a segment of it, albeit a terrific segment, because energy and how we use fossil fuels. But there are other things that we do far outside the purview of the energy committee. Of course, their charge could be altered by y'all, you know, you make a standing committee into something else. And that's, I mean, I'm, you know, just saying, do something, you know, however best you think to do it. The energy committee seems, you know, natural resource committee, I mean, you're thinking of the environment, you know? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Well, I actually have one, too, that I think, well, I have two. I have one comment. I'd like to recognize Matty Clark for her second place for Journalism Award. I think that's well-deserved. We have, you know, from my stint on the city council, I think you have been ferocious in making sure that you understand the issues, tracking down information so that the articles are accurate, and I, I think I speak for everyone when I say we really appreciate that. It's really good journalism, and so it's nice to see you get this award. So congratulations. I just wanted to make a couple comments, because at the last meeting, when we were talking about open space and that report and, and then talking about extending interim zoning, Councilor Chittin was very concerned that when, I think one of us said, probably me, that in the past, we couldn't just let things end without the regulations in place because we'd done that once, I was on the council then, and a lot of the IZ work was for naught. And prior to that meeting, I had been willing, or to the point where I was about to think, okay, we can work with the developers, we've done all this work, things will be great. And, and then I learned about some comments that had been made at the Planning Commission meeting. I shared them. I acknowledge I did not hear them because I wasn't at the meeting, but I did remark that, and Tom pressed me to identify who it was, so it's Michael Semenow, had made some comments, and they were, I went to the, or had some help getting the minutes of, or the, the oral audio translated, and, because Michael came up to me afterwards and said, I really didn't say that. And so I had, since I hadn't heard him, I got the transcript. So I thought, just to kind of set the record straight, I would read some of those comments because I think they really underscore my discomfort, once I heard that he had said these things to the Planning Commission, that some of the intents or the outcomes of all the work for the interim zoning might very well fall by the wayside if we didn't extend the period so the work could be completed. So at that meeting, and these are the quotes, "The priority properties that have been identified by the Open Space Committee, they identified them based on, I mean, they're a parcel and they have an owner. They could be five acres, they could be 50 acres. They identified them because somewhere on those parcels, there are characteristics that they feel are important to know and to perhaps preserve and/or conserve." And that is what we asked them to look at. "We've got a work group that has been looking at the same properties that have been prioritized by the Open Space Committee." There are 25, if you recall, "and we're looking at them through a housing development lens, and we hope to generate a report." Goes on to say, "Open space did a great job, but we're going to do our thing. And what we're hoping is that as the Planning Commission and as the council moves down the path and starts considering the development of policy, that we're, that you are going to be looking at both the housing agenda and the open space agenda, that there's not going to be silos where each one of those agendas is being looked at and policies are being developed without understanding the impact on the other agenda. That's what we are hoping occurs. Get the stakeholders together, start more collaboration to figure out how to best use our resources and create equity in the housing and the open space agenda." And then it goes on, and he was asked some questions. Well, I read that and I was astounded that another ad hoc group of citizens chose to look at exclusively the 25 parcels that were identified as having natural resources that were of important importance, and they were specifically looking at, his words, those 25 parcels for development. Now, I think the report all along was very clear that they had identified the parcels and agreed that parts of the parcels were, held these natural resources, but other parts did not. And they, I think they said that five or six times in the committee. It would be hard to miss that if you actually read the report. Yet there were 100 and, how many? 68?
189.
Eighty, 189 parcels in total. So this group that's interested in housing chose to look at the 25 that were high priority natural resources.
To give clarity as to what group that is, I understand Mike's on the Affordable Housing Committee, and I thought he was a sub-group of the Affordable Housing Committee.
This is that he described it as it's made up of a couple of people who were on the Open Space Committee, three people from the Affordable Housing Committee, and there's two other independent citizens who are participating in the process.
He says that?
Yes. Those, that, those are his exact words.
So is that the Affordable Housing Committee? The two other members?
Um, he doesn't say. He just says, "Independent citizens who are participating in the process." So I do not know who they are.
So you're connecting that to that word scramble? And so when I, when I read that, because Helen nicely shared that beforehand, I just, I don't see that as there's going to be a development scramble when interim zoning ends. I see that as saying that it's been an approach which has overemphasized, the report itself overvalues the natural resources of these parcels because it considers the entire parcel and only 10 or so percent might be considered for this. So this, that, that statement right there is just saying that we need to have a full view of the overall interest of those parcels for affordable housing, for other uses besides natural resource protection, which the report, so all I read in that is not saying that there's going to be a scramble for development, but instead that we need to look at it with a balanced perspective. So I still don't know how that would challenge that point.
I guess I would push back because there's 150 other parcels that are open that do not apparently have the intensity of natural resources on them that warranted what we asked them to identify. I mean, you have said numerous times...
Talking about two different things here, though, because, I mean, that's not the scramble for development. That's whether or not a parcel should be on our list of potential acquisition if the owners wanted to sell it on the open market. But this is a warrant discussion, and I think Mike Semenow should be here for this. So I will pause on this, but I'm not sure what you're trying, what, what...
I think what I'm trying to say is, I think when you have a group that looks at only, initially, 25 parcels that were identified as being particularly important to our natural resources out of 179?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. That, that suggests to me that there are people more interested in developing anything and everything than looking at this work and saying, oh, okay, let's not discuss right away how to develop those 25 parcels, even though that may happen, and we don't own them, so that's a conversation, but let's look at the other open space parcels if housing, and it isn't even affordable housing, he never mentions affordable housing, is just housing that is needed. So I think that puts, underscores and really emphasizes why it's important to have the full work of the IZ extended so we can make sure that there isn't that scramble. I, I, I think this, so I'm just sharing that. I brought it up. He challenged me. He asked me where I got this information, and I delivered that to the council and you and Paul as well, and felt that I needed to clarify that is what I was referring to as a, a reason, a really strong reason to extend IZ.
I would say that, that initially, prior to last week's, was it last week's meeting? Was it that last week?
Yeah.
I just want to say, this is not a warrant discussion on the agenda item, and I also think it's not fair for Mike to not be here, so.
I was going to make a general, general comment that I was leaning towards, okay, IZ's gone long enough, but then, you know, then I learned about this, and then, you know, rather than I forget the term scramble, I'd say it's more like it muddied the waters and didn't provide a clear, a clear picture of where we were headed. And then I thought the Planning Commission's presentation was terrific. I thought they did an excellent job, and they are doing an excellent job. And it really comes down to, you know, we went through all this IZ to get to a, to get to an appropriate conclusion, and to pull the rug out from the Planning Commission at the final, at the final hours, so to speak, would be, would be really just a breach of confidence and, and goodwill on our part, and we got to get, we got to let the job finish. And I'm, I'm confident it will finish in a, in a format that folks will be able to work with. I mean, there's some faith in there, but I, I truly believe that's the point we will, we will reach at this point. And quite honestly, that meeting was not particularly contentious. I chatted with one of the developers on the way out, and his, his thought was, well, basically, I can only paraphrase, yeah, we can, that's all right. We'll, you know, it, the job will get done, and that's, that's probably going to be for the best in the long run or something like that. So I didn't get any real negative pushback at that point at all. I think we did, I think we did what we needed to do. I think it was a good move, and now the Planning Commission's got to step on the gas. So...
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate Helen's disclosure. I think that, you know, as a chair, and she, she is, I think, very serious and responsible about presenting arguments, and I think that when there's a challenge, that it's very much appropriate for her to come forward and say, this is what I was basing my comments on. I applaud that.
Okay, moving on to five announcements in the City Managers' Report. Tim, announcement?
So like everybody else, I went to the IZ meeting last week. I also took Tom's place at the GMT Board meeting. I had to leave a little bit early, but I think the highlights are a bit, budgeted better this year because they raised their prices. They've been looking at the public experience and cutting some service because they're going by their show. And they had a presentation by the owner of the company. So we have, I think that just takes it a little bit better than it was. That's possible. And they're looking at possibly, I think they had a recommendation that they needed some new accounting software because there were too many separate spreadsheets being used in the accounting department, so. Then finally, there was a panel discussion brought in, four individuals that presented on diversity and inclusion. Very interesting discussion, and I couldn't stay for all the Q and A. I was there for a little bit. I had a couple of questions of my own, but there, other people were asking a lot of questions, which is good. So it was an enjoyable meeting. Also went to the BIA Master Plan meeting at the airport, but had to leave early because of the DBCA meeting. Luckily, we discovered that there was a BCA meeting at the same time, so we, two councillors were present and two had to leave, that's right, so. And that's it.
Yeah, there were four councillors present, actually. Tom and I were there.
Yep, you were there. No, we had to leave, and you stayed.
Yeah, two stayed on.
And Dave wasn't there, right?
Which means this...
And then after I left, I realized, oh, you didn't have to go to the BCA.
Right, I realized that, too.
Why aren't they coming? Because they don't have to go, because they're running for office.
Which you're supposed to attend.
They won't be working at the polls. You better not be working at the polls, okay.
All, it's so much time.
Not on the inside, anyway.
Okay. Do you have anything to report?
No, I was, you know, obviously the IZ meeting, and then I went to the, then I went to the school board's meeting. to the school board's meeting the next night. And, listen, I didn't, I thought it was going to be more of public input. It was more of a, of a rehash of the reasons they've developed the plan that they have. I, I honestly did not talk with any folks that were particularly enthusiastic, more enthusiastic about not seeing that, that bond issue pass, which I found personally a good idea because, because I think, I think there are a lot of other options that have to be considered and we can't afford to, to bond ourselves into 30 years of high-end indebtedness and also make South Burlington an unaffordable place for anybody to live. And I think that's the direction in which they've got us headed and that's not good. And, and quite frankly, I think from talking with a few folks that should be in the know, they kind of, they kind of recognize that. I think, I think down deep inside, this is just my impression, this is, this is a starting point and from here, we'll have to get creative to determine what the future holds that will be in the best interest of our kids. But there's no point in building new schools if there's not going to be anybody who will afford to live here and send their kids to other schools. And that's the direction that this would put us in and I think it's extremely hazardous. So that was my takeaway from that meeting.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, we used to have a city school item, didn't we not? An agenda item? Was that something that-
Oh, city school relations. I guess we did drop that, sorry.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, they didn't go so well with the community center. Maybe that's when we dropped it from the agenda.
No, no, we added it after, as a way to-
Yes, I remember.
Stay up to speed.
Well, it didn't quite happen.
Well, I don't know. We haven't met with them recently.
Supposed to be this Friday.
Yeah, so I, I, we don't have an update, but we will the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I, I, you know, whatever the outcome is of the March 3rd, I'm meeting a lot of people as I go door to door and I, I have to say, you know, if I were to read the tea leaves, I'd probably share the sentiments that David shared here. We're going to have to meet with them. I think, I think in some ways, this is a critical time for us to work together. And, you know, whether or not it passes, because either way, we're going to have to rally, you know, either to really, you know, focus on how we're going to keep this town affordable, or in the opposite, how are we going to make sure that the schools are providing the best education possible for our young people and how we can rally the public around that. And I, I think that might be a discussion they, you know, would not be willing to have. I don't know. I'm just saying it would be, I think, wise for us to open that up because we do, I think all of us believe that the schools are a key component to the desirability of living here in South Burlington and to our future. And so, I just wanted to-
Yes. After this vote, we're going to have to, we're going to, there's going to have to be some tough work done to determine where we go and how we proceed going forward in order to get some work done and keep the town affordable.
I think we laid the groundwork, actually, at the steering committee meeting because we talked about, I think it was there, I don't think it was our meeting with them, about really having a joint discussion on what is the debt, appropriate debt load for this community. And maybe it was our meeting with them?
Uh, no, it was at the steering committee.
No, it was at the steering committee. So I think that was acknowledged as an important conversation, which is how you continue to make the community affordable and work with them so it's not, we got our projects and you have your projects and we don't sort of add them together and see what the, the whole thing is. So, do you have some?
I do, so I won't go over the SBBA, but I did want to add something to the airport master planning committee meeting. I'm very glad to have, Charlie Baker's here. Charlie Baker was there, as was Paul Connor, and I thought they both guided me, in addition to everybody, as to planning language that does not make assumptions, but rather suggests an idea or a possible thing to explore as opposed to a firm plan. And I really appreciated their input. We were also able to give them kind of detailed feedback on maps and, and right-of-ways that belong to the city and how to communicate with the public with regard to the, you know, unveiling of this plan because, as you can imagine, there are people who will look very closely at that to see how it falls with regard to their property. So, I thought it was a very, you know, a very honest and, and very constructive discussion. I, I like the consultants that are working. Also this morning, Helen and I attended the Sexual Violence Planning Group. We are in the second phase, building off of last October's forums on domestic violence. April is Sexual Violence Awareness Month and we would like to engage the schools in this discussion more specifically because it is something that starts in puberty and it continues on especially as you, if you go on to college. So, these are, these are things that I think we'll be providing more information on, particularly next month. And whether or not I'm sitting here or out there, I'll, I'll be happy to, to give people updates.
And, and I think David identified that as something that he brought up and, and he came to the, to the first meeting or the second meeting. So I think there's some engagement there. So I, I have planned to have a call tomorrow to find out who wants to participate in the planning and to what extent they can help us with the school and the students. I'm sure they'll give us a room, but, but it's engaging that audience and not just adults. So.
Two things. I want to thank Tim for going to the first CCTA, now GMT, board meeting as the alternate. So I couldn't make it. I teach Tuesdays and Thursdays, so there was just no way I could be there for the retreat. So thank you. Hopefully you want to go to some more. The alternates are always welcome. The second thing is, it's now launched. You should have all received an Eventbrite Evite for March 21st. It is open to anybody, but we do test its charge to ticket an event to honor our firefighters on March 21st, Saturday. $60 for friends of the firefighters, but that helps pay for all of our honored guests, all of our firefighters and their loved ones to be able to attend. So any friend of the South Burlington Fire Department can attend. If they're interested, they can contact me and we can give them more information. But that's Saturday, March 21st. We hope you guys will attend. You should have received an Eventbrite.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, because that was an issue.
Well, and some of the money, five bucks per ticket goes to the Pat Noack Scholarship Fund.
It is the Pat Noack Memorial South Burlington Firefighters Dinner and Awards Banquet. So yes, thank you for mentioning that. Every ticket that's purchased helps fund that scholarship for continual recognition of her service on the council. That's all.
Great.
Can I just make one announcement?
Yeah, you may.
So I just want to bring the public's attention to a meeting happening on Thursday, March 5th, at the Burlington Police Department. The Lake Champlain Transportation Ferry System is proposing to fare, to reef the Adirondack Ferry. They want to sink it in the middle of the lake as part of an underwater preserve monument. There's more information on the LCT website, but I really think that the city of South Burlington should buy it for a dollar and ram it up on the shore at Red Rocks and make it into a park playground for the kids. But maybe that's not feasible. But it certainly sounded cool when I thought of it the first time because I'd love to have a ferry to play on if I were 10 years old or eight years old and run around and go up in the wheelhouse and-
I think they're running it around about 400 yards.
Well, you know, I know of another ship that they dragged across a long piece of land.
That's right, Shelburne.
We could have our own in Red Rocks.
That's right.
Just, you know, drag it up, okay. It's like Fitzcarraldo, sort of, if you've seen that movie. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
It would just take the upkeep that Shelburne Museum gives to their same ship, you know.
Another foundation we'll need to be working on.
So that's March 5th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. So I went to SB, BCA and got trained again and, you know, it's an important election and it was, there was really a lot of discussion about the security and hopefully the public understands that we have very secure system with the paper backup and it's not online so people really can't get in and mess around with it. So, we're just a little spot in the country, but I, I think our voting will be safe. And I also helped with some voting at one of the senior centers along with spending a little time at the master planning meeting at the airport and the IZ meeting. Kevin?
Thanks, Helen. Just a couple of updates. Tuesday, the 25th, next week, the 25th, you'll have your joint meeting. This is confirmation, joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the Arrowood Report. This will come at the beginning of their meeting and then they'll have other stuff, Planning Commission stuff.
What time?
Uh, I think it's at seven, but let me get confirmation of that.
What date?
The 25th, next Tuesday.
And that's the date I couldn't make, so I'll watch it.
And that's just like an hour or something?
Yeah, it's just, it's just going to be on the Arrowood Report. Probably an hour, 15 minutes. You've seen another liquor license transfer on the agenda tonight. The Department of Liquor Control is, several of these are coming up now because they've kind of changed their approach to people who move from one place to another, but still have a liquor license in place. So now it's just a simple approval from us, from you, of the change of location. And then they're still in the same cycle for their renewal of their license. So this will be the second one. They'll see one more of them next week.
Is there any public knowledge you can share about what's likely happening to that building where it's now being vacated by Puccinelli's and where EMS sits vacant?
I have my suspicions about what's going on, but I-
Nothing that's been public?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We'll talk later.
Are you going to leave us all curious?
Thank you to the counselors who came to the SBBA meeting last week. That was a great meeting.
Oh, I went to that too. That was a great meeting.
Yeah, great meeting. Great to have you there. I think it was great for the, for the members of the association and I've encouraged that we do that at least once a year with them. We have three applications for the NRC in addition to the one you see tonight. So three more have come in and one application for the Affordable Housing Committee.
Oh, okay.
So, because your meeting on the second is the budget meeting and then we'll talk about another special meeting under general-
For reorganization?
Other business, reorganization. The next meeting is the 16th of normal business. David's gone for that, but we have other applications. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Item six, the consent agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the six items, dispersments and certificate of no appeals and stormwater and irrigation at the UVM Horticultural Farm, stormwater design with the Burlington Country Club, having our city manager negotiate and execute a lease for office space at One Kennedy Drive and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and contract for materials inspection and testing services for 180 Market Street.
Or moved?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded or is there any discussion?
Yes, quick question. Do you know what range the cost would be of that, the materials inspection testing contract?
I do not. Oh, well, we're waiting, it's an RFP that we're sending out.
So is it like a hundred to 300,000?
Well, I'm, I'm saying it's closer to the 100,000 level.
Okay.
It's kind of a belt and suspender thing, to be honest. We have a, we have a contract manager, Engelberg, but this is the ability to have additional set of eyes on the testing of things.
Okay. This is an independent way to make sure the concrete is the right formula and-
And all those things.
All those things.
You know, we trust our builder.
Right.
This is just a, more of a, an owner's representative doing the testing.
Yep.
So with a $21 million building, we thought it was the prudent thing to do. It's not a big contract, but-
What's your per square foot cost for One Kennedy Drive?
Uh, the, it's 18 and a half dollars a square foot, 1,500 square feet. That includes the CAM charges.
Including utilities?
Yep. Well, no, not utilities, the CAM charges. It's $14 a square foot and then four and a half for the common area charges, but not utilities.
Is it to be used for office space or is it-
This is the, the clinic.
Yeah, okay, so for the-
So it's, it's-
Jesus.
An office. Do you think that's high or low?
I think it's high.
Compared to the other, the six offices I looked at, it was, it was the best. And it's the right size.
I mean, I don't know. It's a lot more than I'm paying for my wife's professional space, I'll tell you that.
What do you pay?
I'll have to look, but it's substantially less than that. But-
There's space available, but they don't have enough parking.
They don't have enough parking.
Under the old parking regs, they didn't build enough parking.
So, who owns this building now?
Uh, Dave Engels.
Apparently.
How long is the lease for?
Four years.
And they negotiated better rate?
Um, we did negotiate a better.
Really?
Well, the, the fit-up is included in there.
Okay.
So there's some mater-
So that's amortized over four years?
Yes.
What, is it lower unit or upper unit?
It's the upper unit. So it ended up being 12. It ended, it, it started at 12, it ended up being 14 with fit-up. Square foot amortized over the four years.
I mean, it's, it's obviously a convenient spot. I just think it's, I just think it's high. That's all.
Want to pull it? You want to not, not approve it tonight?
No, I mean, if, you guys are more current on all the local comparisons than I am. So, so whatever you think's best.
If it includes the fit-up. And you looked at five other properties.
Where else did you look? I'm just curious.
We looked at two spots, spots in the Blue Mall, two spots at a building on the corner of Dorset and Kennedy, or excuse me, Kennedy and Williston Road.
Which building? You mean the bank building?
The one behind it. The office building behind it.
Right next to James, the one Ted used to be in.
And we, and we-
Paul, that's the, that's the building where the bank is, on the corner.
There's a bank on the corner, but there's a building, if you're, there's a building to the west of that.
Yeah, it's a medical building.
Yep, we looked in there.
That's where my wife's, that's where my wife's space is, but there's not parking. I, I know where the available space is, that's for sure.
It's on the ground floor.
Yeah, I know exactly where it is.
In the back.
Been in there.
Yeah. It was too big and it could have been two spaces, but it was just too big for us and the fit-up would have been a lot. We also looked at-
It's bare, it's bare right now.
Spaces over here at Good Health.
Okay, well, it sounds like you did your due diligence.
Yeah, I'm going to let it, I'm going to let it sit. It's, it's, it's okay.
Be happy you have a good rate. What's the square footage again?
1,536.
Good. Any other questions? You ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Any negatives? No? Okay. Moving on to seven, we have Bob Stock for a presentation on the 2020 census. I apologize, we are running a little late, but we started late and-
Bob, we got the computer running there for you.
I'm going to just cue me, Bob. I'll advance your slides for you. Madam Chairwoman, counselors, Mr. City Manager, thank you. On behalf of the United States Census Bureau, the opportunity to be speaking with you tonight about something that's of a great deal of importance to all of us as residents of not only South Burlington or me, Shelburne, Vermont, but the United States. And that is the decennial census. So, please. I work out of the New York Regional Census Center, but I live and work in Shelburne, Vermont, and I have been now for 36 years. So we'll talk a little bit more about the New York Regional Census Center in a couple of minutes. There is a bit of a Manhattan worldview. So, we serve as the nation's leading provider of quality data about the people in the economy and we are the largest statistical agency in the US, with the exception of a few people like me, primarily scientists and statisticians. So it's not, we don't hang around for 10 years waiting for the census to come along. We're doing at any given point in time about 130 different programs, some of which you may have been involved in, particularly the American Community Survey, which a little bit more about that later and its impact on, on South Burlington. That replaced the long form, the short form of the census, there are only nine questions this year, was replaced back in 1950. The long form is now the American Community Survey, which is done as a statistical sampling in every census tract in the United States on an annual basis and then reported as a five-year median average. And I'll show you the numbers- And I'll show you the numbers for South Burlington as we go along. Can I have the next slide, please? Okay. So we are mandated by Article 1, Section 2 of the US Constitution to conduct the census every 10 years since 1790, counts every resident in the United States where they live and sleep most of the time. We'll talk a little bit about this in a second, about the responses being confidential and protected by federal law. We only use them to produce statistics, so we count everybody once, hopefully only once, being in the right place. So it's important. Now, the first item up there, in terms of the number of seats each state has in the US House of Representatives, we're probably not gonna be worried about that in Vermont anytime soon. When I got here in 1984, the population was about 602,000. It's about 623,000 now, and there is a decline of about 3,000 over the last time we took a look on the Pop Current Population Survey. However, it does determine how more than $675 billion in federal funding is spent on infrastructure programs and services every year. So about 2.5 billion, now this is not a census number, this is from the George Washington University Institute for Public Policy Study that was done the year 2015, so it's probably more than that now, but it was about 2.5 billion in federal funding. So that, there are approximately 55 major programs that are of vital impact over Vermont, particularly the most vulnerable amongst us, Medicaid, SNAP, Section 8 housing, special ed grants, S-Chip, Title III grants, Title I grants, Medicare Part B assistance, and it goes on and on and on from there, school lunch. And it does inform government business and community planning decisions in Vermont. You know, in terms of our representation, I've spoken with some, for example, some of the Northeast Kingdom legislators, and they are vitally concerned about losing population up there because they feel they will lose representation. So it's important within the state also, and it provides population benchmarks for nearly every other US survey. This is important, it's safe. Private information is never published, including names, addresses, social security numbers, and telephone numbers. We ask for very little information. In fact, I probably give more to Amazon every time I order something on there. We do not want credit card information, we don't want social security information. We collect information to produce statistics. It cannot be used against respondents by any government agency or court. We do not share information with Homeland Security, ICE, the FBI, the CIA, and we are not superseded by the Patriot Act. This has been tested in court. So we work under Title 13 of the US Code. Census Bureau employees, including me, are sworn to protect confidentiality for life. It's an oath we take. And you can see the penalties are severe for violating that. We'll just add one other thing about that. The information that we do collect, the names, the addresses, telephone numbers, things like that, is stored offline. It's not online, once we get it, okay? Listen. It is easy. This is different this year. Four ways to respond: online, phone, paper, or the traditional personal visit by a census employee. So we have internet choice, internet push. What that means is, is that most sections of the country will receive a mailer where they're allowed to respond, not allowed, encouraged to respond by internet or by telephone. There are staggered mailings, multiple languages, which I'll show you in a minute. There are, for the online response and the phone response, in addition to English, there are 12 languages, and if we have an enumerator, we have to send an enumerator out, on their iPad, they have 59 different languages. I found one in Burlington that's not written, so Maai Maai, which is an African language, we will hire somebody from that community that also speaks English to help enumerate.
That's amazing.
So as I mentioned, those are the 12 languages, some which apply to Vermont, some don't, and in large numbers. Okay? And please, by the way, I tend to move quickly through these because I'm conscious of your time, but if you have any questions, please do interrupt me. Those are the 59 different languages, in addition to the highlighted ones that you see there, that we'll be providing. So this is a little busy, so let me move very quickly through it. We're already established where to count, we're working in to motivate people to respond now, this is part of why I'm here, and then we will begin counting on March 12th. That would be the first opportunity for people to respond. The enumeration period where we actually send people out will be May 15th through July 31st. We then have to, have to, we, we have to have the results to the president by December 31st, 2020, and a Congress for redistricting by April 1st, 2021. We've already begun some counting, you may have heard about it, Alaska, Northern Maine, and right now we're in the process of talking with folks from group quarters, campus, college campuses, the prisons, nursing homes, anything you can think of that would be group living, to speak with them about how they prefer to enumerate the folks that are there. So we're doing that right now. We need your help. I will refer back, I mentioned I work out of the New York Regional Census Center, so when they told us that we needed 9,100 applicants to fill 2,000 positions, I needed to remind them we have a couple of counties up here that don't have 9,100 people in them. Be that as it may, they were not impressed, they said we need to do this. They have some sort of a metric that they use that says for that many applicants with what will fall out, we wind up with 2,000 positions. Now, these are, these, these jobs pay well, they're anywhere from 20 to 22 dollars an hour. Work part-time, work full-time, work as much or as little as you want.
Are you recruiting?
We are. Heavily, heavily recruiting. Yeah, they, they're great jobs, I mean, it's.
Is it full-time or part? My husband keeps saying, Helen, you should apply.
Well, you should. We could use everybody we can get. We're actually doing reasonably well, other than in Chittenden County and Essex County, Vermont's largest, Vermont's smallest.
You're doing well?
We're not.
Well, so I don't need to apply?
No.
Oh, so I could.
The other ones, the other ones were doing a little bit better, but, yeah, I mean, Chittenden County I can understand, and it, when I looked, I guess it was maybe back towards the fall, the Vermont unemployment rate was 2.2 percent, Chittenden County was 1.5. I mean, I can remember when Vermont structural unemployment used to be considered 3.2, so we're below structure, so, but be that as it may, we do need the folks. So this is the environment that we're working in, probably nothing up there that's gonna surprise you. I'm not gonna read it, I mean, but I guess the ones that stand out for me, obviously, are distrust in government, and a declining response rates. People are surveyed out, so that's a problem. And then the other ones, mobile population and the informal complex living arrangements, but we work around those. So this, this is something that is on the census.gov website that anyone can access. It's called the Response Outreach Area Mapper, and because we're the federal government and we like acronyms, we call it Rome. So what you're able to do with this, if you see that little white box up top, you can type in "South Burlington, Vermont," and it will bring up all of the South Burlington census tracts. If you then click on the tract, you'll bring up that white rectangle, and you, I don't, probably can't see it from here, but the third line down has what's known as a low-response score. This is based on the American Community Survey, which as I mentioned is a five-year moving average, statistically sampled across those five years in every, every census tract in the country. The predicted non-response score, low-response score would be, if we were to conduct the census today with no census advertising, no intervention on your part, that's how many, percentage of the population we'd lose. So in that particular tract, it's about 20 percent, so that's substantial. So move to the next one, please. That's a look at your census tracts, and the low-response scores for each of the tracts, the population, and I've put up some of the traditional hard-to-count population up there. Children under six, especially if they are not in school, especially if they have single parents, notoriously hard to count. It seems like once they do get into school, it's less of an issue because they have more socialization, there's more exposure to it. The parents have more socialization too, and more exposure to the census. Under 18, below the poverty line, age 65-plus, particularly if they are rural, living alone. Renters can be very difficult, and you have three tracts with pretty high rentals, and moved within the last 12 months. So you've got one tract, 3304, where you're turning that over about, about every four years or so.
And 3304 is a section of South Burlington?
It's one of the census tracts of South Burlington.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And then foreign-born. Interestingly enough, you're foreign-born, apparently have been here for a while, because when I looked at some of the, the things up there about, you know, English is not the first language, there wasn't much of it. So whoever's here, they speak English really well, so they're gonna be less of an issue for us to count, as opposed to maybe Winuski of Burlington, where it's gonna be more of a problem. So the way that we overcome the obstacles is through partnerships. Trusted members of the community, such as yourselves and a number of the other committees that you have, working out in the community now, plus the folks that you know. It's your trusted voice that's gonna get this done, so it's the local knowledge and insight that, you know, Census Bureau personnel may or may not have, but you do have. So one of the, one of the things that we do, if we can go to the next one, please, is that we, we ask, in many cases, the folks to form what we call complete count committees, and that's gonna be, as you see at the very bottom in there, but these are some of the other things that you can do, and by the way, you have. We've had census recruiting at some of your summer events, I actually staffed one, staffed one of them myself, the ones that you have over by the ballfields. So we've done that. You can help us by sharing the census message with your social media, through your newsletters, helping with recruiting and things like that. If you have events where you would like a speaker, where we can do something similar to this, but, yep, we do that too. And I never come with an ask without a give. We're all data-driven, and I know that you have plenty of folks that are in the, working within South Burlington, look for data. The Data Dissemination Group is a free service offered by the Census Bureau. These are folks that, if you have someone that's writing, looking for a grant, or looking for some information around planning, things like that, if you call that toll-free number, there's a live person that will answer that. They will work with you to extract that data, work with you to format the data the way that you need it or want it, and they'll come out and work with you if need be, if the project demands that sort of thing. It's a free service at the United States Census Bureau. Thank you. Any questions? Anything else? Nobody asked about the citizenship question, good. It's not on.
Well, I was gonna ask, but I couldn't remember what the question was, and I was pretty sure it wasn't on.
No, it's not. We count all residents. Thank you again.
Well, thank you. That is important work.
Bob, I wanna thank you for, for coming in as well. We are working on the Complete Count Committee, we actually have one member of our public, Peter Taylor here, who's agreed to serve on that committee, and I'll be back in touch with you within the next few days about that.
Thank you, man. Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Just wanna remind the council that the first automatically tabulated census was completed on Hollerith tabulating machines with Hollerith cards.
What?
I think it was sponsored by a company called International Business Machines, it might've been called something before that, but.
I was gonna say.
Dayton Slice Meat Slicing Machine, or International Tabulating, whatever it was, but, yeah, those little punch cards, those were the first time they were used was for census.
Well, you know, and the census is really fun, 'cause I've been doing some genealogy and using the Mormon stuff out in Salt Lake, and we were going back in my husband's family in New York City, and all the census was handwritten and, of course, but it was pretty interesting stuff to see this, you know, 150 years ago or something.
If they just went to the, the four main cell providers and asked them at any one point in time, how many phones are on and where are they, that's pretty much the whole census of the country, except for the kids down below age five, right?
Okay, item eight, Charlie Baker for CCRPC regarding your I-89 study.
Thank you, those at home, CCRPC is the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, and I'm hoping it turns into our 89 study.
Yes.
Rather than my 89 study.
Depends on if it's successful or not.
That is absolutely correct, which is why I'm here. So, so you can move to the next slide. I wanted to share with you, we're in a round of public input and public meetings, really around the, kind of the goals and objectives of the study, so this is a pretty critical stage for us, because as we evaluate the alternatives and solutions and what we might invest with, or invest in in the long term, we're evaluating those against the goals and objectives that get set out at this stage. So do you have a handout? I'll, I guess I'll pass this out both to council members and. And I'll also mention there is a website where you can get all this information, Envision, E-N-Vision89, where you can get all this information. So I'm gonna quickly give you, or as quickly as I can, an overview of what we've been presenting at the public meetings, with apologies to those who have seen this before, but I wanted, the reason I'm in front of this city council and no other city council or select board is, you're kind of at, newsflash, you're at the epicenter of 89 in Chittenden County.
Really?
I know, I know, you didn't know this, this is why I come here, I'm bringing you information.
Right, that's why there's traffic.
There's a little bit of traffic, right, that's probably somewhat why we're all here too, right? And full disclosure, I'm also a South Burlington resident. So I'll real quickly kinda give you some of the background.
Oops.
We have an advisory committee, oh no, keep rolling. Yep. So the team, Dave Saladino from VHB is heading it up, and he's got a bunch of other consultant teams, Alain is heading it up from our staff. We have a technical committee, of which Justin Rabideau, representing the city, is on the technical committee, as well as VTrans folks. We have an advisory committee with a whole group of interested organizations, everybody from AARP to VNRC, the Vermont Natural Resources Council, the Conservation Law Foundation, from Armetal Perspectives, Local Motion, from Viking, GMT Transit, and I'm not naming every single one of them, but all the municipalities, et cetera. The plan, what we're doing is rooted in our Metropolitan Transportation Plan that we finished about a year and a half ago, as well as VTrans's plan, and there's other plans that we look at also. And I'm not sure if we've talked about this before, but a few years ago, when we were starting to work on our plan, we contracted with EPR, Jeff Carr was a subconsultant to work on some demographic forecasts. I kinda pause at this one for a moment, just to kinda take this in, of course, the census is really important, so please, please do what Bob was just talking about, because that's what kinda grounds our numbers. But we, we updated our forecasts significantly, mostly significantly by decreasing the out-year numbers. So if you looked a few years ago, we were estimating that we might be closer to 200,000 population in like by 2035, or somewhere in that ballpark. You know, our population increase rate, or rate of population increase has slowed down significantly from where we were in the, you know, 80s and 90s, and so it's a 14 percent increase over the, I'll call it the 30 years between 2020 and 2050. Household, household size is continuing to shrink, so households are increasing a little faster than population, a 20 percent increase.
Say that again? I'm sorry, households are.
Yep, increasing as a percentage, faster than population, so.
How's the households, is it declined significantly?
So, yeah, household size, so, yeah, we have fewer people living in each housing unit, you know, on an average, right? You know, probably, I don't know, when I was growing up, it was, you know, getting, it was close to three people per housing unit, you know, now it's closer to two.
Okay.
And that's just smaller household size, smaller families, more single people.
So there's more of them.
More housing units, yeah, we need more housing units to house the same number of people, is another way to think about it, which answers some of those questions of like, why do we, what's, why, why is it pressured? Which answers some of those questions of like, why do we, what's, why is it pressure on housing production so much? Well, our, what's happening in our population, we're growing, some of it is growth, but all of it, some, more of it is also just, we need more housing for the same population. The other thing, employment also is coming down a little bit, but you know, but you'll see here that you'll, that it's increasing, or projected to increase, faster than our population and households in Chittenden County. So that is not, if that trend keeps going in that direction, that's not really, well, from my view, and I think regionally, if we're interested in all the kinds of things that you were talking about, natural resource preservation writ large, climate change, smart growth, what this is telling us is the trend of people not being able to find housing that's affordable in Chittenden County continues, and they have to go to surrounding counties to find housing they can afford, and they're commuting in, adding to the traffic issues, for sure, amongst other things. So anyway, that's just kind of big picture. I wanted to pause on that for a moment, because it's just one important piece of data that informs this. You can keep going, Elaine. You can skip over this one, we did the MTP, skip over. One thing I want to pause here is, yeah, so we're, this is grounded in our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. The transportation plan, we updated the transportation plan and the energy plan, and I think we probably need to talk about this a little bit more explicitly in these presentations, to get to 90% renewable by 2050. That's the reason we're using 2050 as the out-year. And the state legislature required us to do this a couple of years ago, right? You may, you may remember, I can't remember if South Burlington's updated their injury plan, I think you have. But I mention that because there's more than just the transportation investments that are baked into this plan. There's the electrification of the vehicle fleet, about 90% of our passenger fleet needs to be electrified to reach the energy goals. We also need to reduce energy consumption by about 30%. So that's a lot more efficiency, weatherization, and other energy-type investments, to be sustainable. And land use change. Our previous plan had an 80% goal for housing units to be in our areas where we, you know, have water, sewer, transit services, biking, walking. To get to our energy goals, we're pushing the concentration of households to 90%, to get to those energy goals and transportation goals. And making major increases in biking, walking, transit, to serve all that. So anyway, I just, I know, you know, the city council has been focused on a lot of progressive issues, and I wanted, you know, I think there's a lot of alignment between what you're talking about and what we're talking about in our regional plan. The first bullet notes that when we sit down with VTrans and kind of talk about where money is going to, projected to go over the long term, 70% of transportation funding in the state is going to just maintain the system, preserve the system. So that's, you know, paving, bridges, stormwater improvements, but 70% just to preserve the system. So we have 30% to invest to improve it, sorry, did I say 70% to maintain, 30% to improve, which is that list down below. And then I think the bottom bullet is, so only if behavior doesn't shift, you know, if, if some of the trends, you know, that people are living further away and driving more, and we're not, if we have a doubling of transit growth, you know, if that's not happening, or we can't do better than that, then as a last resort, we would look at capacity expansion. So this is really kind of the background for, why are we talking about 89, given all the other issues going on? And this was, you know, just, I think, real quickly, 2015, the orange segment between Exit 14 and 15, South Burlington and Winewski, is it in the 80th percentile of capacity? Yes, sir?
Just clarifying point on what you just said. So if I just heard you correctly, if the growth in housing gets pushed further into the rural areas, that would translate, in your mind, to an increased capacity on 89, which is additional lanes on 89? Is that what you said?
Maybe you might have skipped, but it certainly adds to increased vehicle miles of travel, right? Increased travel on the highways, which, and here if we play it out, next slide. Thank you, Tom. It's, it looks like that, if we don't do anything, which is, that's, that section of 89 gets overcapacity. So I think I want to answer yes, I think, to your question. And so then, we looked at one more layer. If we make all those investments to have people use alternative modes and double transit service, we can get it to, and, oh, by the way, and this is where we put in a couple placeholders, I think we call them straw man projects, if we widen that segment of 89 between 14 and 15, and heads up, South Burlington, add an interchange in South Burlington to provide alternative ways to get around South Burlington, traffic flow moves better through this area. But it kind of begs the question, those are big decisions, with tens of millions of dollars of implications, should we or shouldn't we? Hence, let's do this study. And so...
12B, is that the other?
We, we put in 12B as a placeholder thing, just because we had looked at it before, so we had a little bit more information. But interestingly, and this is just kind of the initial test of the model that we did, you know, about two years ago now, putting in Exit 14N, you know, that interchange that the airport had proposed initially, had kind of the same kind of benefit to the system. In other words, and at least my interpretation was that, it took enough traffic out of Exit 14 itself, that the system worked better.
But that goes over the solar...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Again, I'm, yeah. That's why, that was, that was even a less feasible, I'm not saying any of these things are feasible yet.
Well, it's still on the...
We were just testing out some ideas. We really looked at, you know, 13, in some way, could 13 be improved?
So that's probably not going to happen.
And we're, here's the project now. So that was some background.
Okay.
First thing to note is that we're in the early stages of this, and look at the, all the way to the end, we're trying to get this done pretty much by the end of 21, 2021. So that's, you know, a year and a half or more from now. So that's point number one. Point number two, we are, we are in this vision and goals stage, you know, kind of the winter time. We're doing public outreach and taking feedback through the end of March on those goals and objectives for the study, so please give us comments at Envision89. We did, started doing some analysis work back into last year. The next phase coming up, task four, in the middle there, interchange evaluation. And again, the reason I'm here specifically, is because I think the interchange evaluation, I think we'd like to have a couple more, and maybe more robust and more time on your agenda to, in, in the springtime and maybe summertime, to talk about the interchange evaluation. You know, it has huge implications for South Burlington, you know, positive and negative, depending on what, what you decide to do, or... So we were, we are going to, I think, try to get in front of you, and let us know if there's other groups. I don't know if, you know, we should be talking to the Planning Commission at all, or other groups within the city, to get feedback, probably at the front end of that analysis, like, here's what we're thinking, we're going to look at and evaluate. And I want to make sure that we're evaluating and trying to get the answers to the questions that you want answered. And so, this is also when I transition from our study, or from our, our study to your study. So, so we really want to, I think, get your input at the front end, of making sure we're answering the questions that, not just the city council, but also, you know, the public in South Burlington want to have answered about this, about interchanges in particular. And then we want to come back, I think, as we have that analysis, you're pretty well drafted, to say, here's what's coming out of it, did we answer the questions that you wanted answered, you know, maybe we'll have a little bit of opportunity to tweak it a little bit. But it's pretty critical that the city weigh in on this process, this evaluation, and help us get to, I'll say, I'll say the right answer, knowing there's a lot of options and possibilities here, you know, from doing nothing, to doing something very expensive. But...
Charlie, what does, what does weighing in look like, in an official capacity? How does the council, as a body, weigh in, or the Planning Commission, as a body, weigh in on behalf of South Burlington? What's the best way to do that?
Yeah, and I think, Charlie, I wanted to open up this dialogue to, to ask you a little bit about, you know, what, how much process should we have in the city, with the city, with the city council, with public meetings, you know, what makes sense? Because, because ultimately, I think, for all of our sakes, I guess, you know, we'd be asking the city council to get to a vote at some point. And I think, you know, there are, are major implications for the city of South Burlington here. And, you know, hopefully, whatever happens or is proposed, the city needs to be on board with it, that's not the right term. The city needs to be an integral part of deciding what happens. Because I think ultimately, you'd want to include it in your, you know, your master plan, and...
So that's between the March and September of this year?
Yeah, probably that interchange piece, you know, and then, the next phase after that is, we're kind of throwing more pieces together to look at, okay, that was just the interchange question, now how does the whole system work with some other improvements, and, and looking at it more as a package. So anyway, that's, let's go on to the next slide. We're looking, we are looking at the whole of 89, all the way through the county, so it's 37 miles, seven interchanges, you know, we've already gotten a couple other requests, like, look at an interchange in Bolton, look at an interchange in Milton, right? So we'll look at some of those things, too. And definitely look at each one of the interchanges, not just as to how it serves interstate travelers, but how do, how do the arterials, how do you get off the interstate or on to the interstate from the community? I think one of the things we're trying to be sensitive about, this is, and VTrans is also, I should, is a partner with us on this, right? This is VTrans and the RPC doing this, is they wanted to make sure to be very sensitive to the communities, right? It's one thing to be VTrans, and say, we only care about through traffic, but the reality is, you know, the majority of this traffic is either beginning or ending in Chittenden County, in the core area here. And so you can see, we're looking at some of the arterials, Dorset and Williston Road in particular, at 14. And depending on, you know, how Kennedy, or, you know, Kennedy around 13, if it's something there, you can see up at 16, 15, some of those stretches of state highway.
Is Colchester sort of taken care of? I mean, they're redoing that, aren't they?
It's heavy between Colchester and...
Depends if you ask Colchester.
Well, don't they have a plan that they're implementing?
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
So that's been decided?
I should say, yeah, so, yeah, so a few years ago, we kind of worked on the Exit 16 interchange, the diverging diamond project, which is hopefully at the tail end of litigation, settling up. I think if that litigation ends soon, VTrans will start work on that this summer.
Okay.
So they do have a project, you know, it was trying to make the most efficient use, and it's really started off as a safety project.
Right.
So Route 7 by Costco there, was one of the high-crash locations.
It's sort of a cool design, I think.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, yeah, hopefully that addresses a lot of the safety issues, and it will help with some congestion at Exit 16 there, to answer that question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Yeah. I wanted to go back to one of the first slides about employment. I wanted to know, you know, where these cars are coming from and where they're going. And I, I know that, in this community, we've been talking about students traveling between, particularly the northern towns, down to Chittenden County to go to school.
Sure. And a lot of, a lot of workers, too, yeah.
Yeah. So I wanted to know, do you track that?
Yeah.
The employment, as well as, you know, any additional traffic? I just bring up the schools, because...
Yep. Yeah, and, you know, I mean, really, thanks to the census, you know, we get estimates about where people are living and working, and use that information to inform the traffic model.
Yeah. So we have a 35% increase, that's for the county?
That's right.
But is it in Burlington primarily, or is there also traffic traveling up to Colchester? You know, is there...
Oh, sure. Well, I would say, sorry, the map on the right, I didn't talk about, that's our Areas Plan for Growth in our Regional Plan, which really aligns with where our municipalities have zoned for higher-density residential development. But within that, a smaller percentage of that has been zoned for employment. You know, and you guys can think about South Burlington, you know, you have some in corridors, and some off Kimball, and it's a smaller subset of that, Megan, I guess, to answer your question. But, yeah, there is some in, you know, Water Tower Hill in Colchester, definitely South Burlington and Burlington, Essex, and Williston, all have significant job locations.
Increases?
Sorry?
Increases?
Oh, 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 sure, yes.
Does that account for the 35% increase?
Okay.
Yep.
So we have that information for...
But we have that information? Isn't that something that our Economic Development Committee has been trying to...
I think the information for us, it's in the traffic demand model, so you need to have that.
Well, we have it in a spreadsheet, too.
We can actually, we can just give you the information, nothing probably actually poor, hazard information already, in some form or another, but we're happy to keep...
Okay, that would be good for the economic impact.
I would be interested to know where the starting points are, and where they're going to, you know, where the job increases are.
The origin and destinations?
Oh, you've gone origin destinations, so that's...
That, too, but also where the job centers are, and where the growth is.
Yeah, we can give you data for, you know, basically zones, but in origin and destination, you need to run an analysis. So it's very, you know, it's slightly different kind of level of effort to do that, so we can...
So that's not something you've done necessarily, but...
Well, no, it's...
We have done that.
Oh, you have?
We have the data, it's, and the data is gettable, but it's like, we're kind of analyzing the data to answer a specific question. So I think, give us what the specific question is, like, I can give you, we give you a density map, of like, you know, employment by zone, you know, geographic zone in there, to get a sense of where the highest density of employment is, or the highest numbers, but...
I would be interested in that.
We also have traffic volumes, and that's going to give you a lot of the information you're looking for, right?
And do you have that density for, for job growth, looking prospectively? Because, I mean, you have...
Prospectively, or...
Well, going forward.
Yes.
For that future?
Yes.
But that's pro, isn't it?
Pro, yep, yep. Yeah, we have forward and backwards, yep. So...
Well, I think with regard to, you know, mixed-use development, that's really important, to know where these jobs are, and where the people are traveling from, and where ideally they would be living, right?
Yep.
And where it's going to be living themselves. I think that's really key.
That is the challenge, that's why we got to trying to increase more housing in that blue area, to make really the trip distances between, you know, home and work shorter, right? That gives people more opportunities to shift modes, so...
And also to know if the cars are traveling north, because that ramp that you show is the, is to go north on 89, that's where you have yellow, or...
Yep. Yeah, that's the, that's the afternoon peak hour.
Yeah, so people are traveling back north.
Yep, in the afternoon, they go up north.
And that's in the afternoon peak hour.
The largest, the largest commuter direction is from Franklin County to Chittenden County, right? That's where we made it easiest to use 89 to get to someplace where housing's a lot cheaper.
And, yeah, and do you know, also, another specific question? You're asking for specifics, because I, I just know from colleagues, that they, they do live in Franklin County, because they want to have land.
Right.
And we don't have necessarily, you know, a parcel of land with a house on it for the price they can afford here in South Burlington.
Sure.
So do you have any data on that, with regard to what type of housing?
Not so much. More, more just, you know, where they are, not, not what kind of property they have. I mean, you could look at that, we could probably do some sort of assessment of that within Chittenden County, because we have all the zoning data, but, and also the parcels, but... So let me get to the end of this, and, sorry, boy.
No, go ahead, you, taking that little...
Yeah, no, it's, the, the data is interesting, and, so I think, you know, looking, you know, there are capacity issues, safety issues, there's also some system deficiencies, which, you know, can either make things more unsafe, or things that need to be maintained. So I think one of the things VTrans has constantly brought up is that the interstate is now more than 50 years old, so all those, every single bridge is 50 years old or more, and so they're getting to kind of the, like, point of, which may be opportunities at times, you know, because they weren't designed with sidewalks, or bike paths, or things on them, there may be opportunities, and they want to kind of take, take this chance to kind of look long-term, at what's, what's their kind of replacement schedule going to look And so let's skip over this, but just to say, you know, we're kind of looking at, between... And so let's skip over this, but just to say, you know, we're kind of looking at, between 14 and 15 is where we see the highest traffic volumes and most, highest congestion. And we are looking at safety as a huge, you know, you're aware this has been designated a safety corridor by the state, you know, they were doing some more enforcement, more monitoring, and you can see the number of, you know, accidents and fatal crashes and, so there's a lot going on in this corridor. Yeah, I think we kind of covered that. And we'll zoom in at each interchange, you know, and look at what's happening, you know, on those connecting roads. Here you see, you know, both congestion, safety issues, you know, I don't know if this is new information for you folks. And then just going forward, you know, we've been having in the public meetings more conversational questions. I know Kevin was at the, the first meeting we actually had in this room about two weeks ago, and I thought, had a very good conversation with the public that attended, trying to hear their issues and what they were thinking, and we had a second one last week in Williston, you know, and it's interesting to hear the differences as you go from urban to a more suburban rural setting, because we got, you know, people from neighboring towns in Williston, you know, who tend to drive more. Here we heard more definitely from bicyclists that use, you know, try to get through exit 14, right? Things that you heard, you know, when is that bike ped bridge going to be over 89? So, so I just kind of let you know that those conversations are going on. We're doing, the next meeting in March is in Winuski, and we're asking just kind of what they'd like to see happen on 89 or at the interchanges.
Are, are you interested in just hearing from Winuski at that meeting, or are these open to everyone?
No, 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 anybody...
Because I couldn't make the, the last one.
Anybody, anyone.
Okay.
Yep.
Or all welcome, please come.
Yeah, you can go to the next slide.
What date in March is that?
That's the 11th.
March 11th in the evening.
March 11th at the, at the city hall.
City Hall?
Yep, at the city hall.
This is a draft vision statement, so this is one of the things we're taking comments on, you know, about safety, resiliency, reliable, efficient movement of people and goods, and in alignment with, you know, state, regional, municipal plans, you know, sort of trying to make sure that what, if there is something that happens on the interstate, it is not provoking reactions by residents that actually fly in the face of your plan. So which will be a more complicated conversation we'll have later on. And we've at least initially drafted these six goals, and we're definitely taking feedback on these, so these are kind of, if you think about these, they're kind of the big buckets of criteria by which we'd evaluate whatever kind of investments we might make. Safety again at the top, preservation down at the bottom, and then, you know, kind of the ones in the middle have a mix of things. There's mobility and efficiency, the environmental stewardship, the resilience, so things like greenhouse gases and looking at the impacts of climate change and things like that, the economy, and then just the sustainability and health of our communities.
Is that where noise walls would go?
Um, yeah, that might be either under, you know, making...
I mean, is that how you can, you can make that part of the conversation?
Mobility part?
Yes.
Sure.
And I can't remember, and the next slide, and the handout, take a look, there's some, you know, specific objectives, again, draft, you know, draft stamped over the cross of this. I can't remember if noise is one of the specific criteria or objectives under one of those, but...
Liveable, sustainable, and healthy communities.
But I think if you wanted to make sure noise got evaluated, you know, that would be something to definitely, this is a time to make sure we hear that.
Okay.
Sorry, is that someone bad? Yeah, all right, thanks.
Is Southern Connector 2050, is that a new slogan they're going to use?
Southern Connector 2050? I don't think so. So anyway, tried to cover a bunch of information there. Southern Connector, if you're referring to the project in Burlington?
Yeah.
I expect, see now I'm going to go, I'm going to get very risky, I'm going to expect that that's going to happen before I die. So, place your bets now.
Is there something we should know?
You have a long...
I know, what time is it? Short clock do I have, you know? I'm figuring at least a few more years, so have a look at that. It is actually, you know, it's, it's in the capital program now, so it's in, you know, the next few years, and I think that is also in, in kind of the, the final throes before they actually start construction. And just to back up for a second, because I think this is kind of an interesting point, in talking to Vtrans, just about the big picture that they look at in terms of making transportation investments statewide, and it's just been recently that I think they've been seeing the daylight after completing a long list, Southern Connector being one of them, of what they refer to as legacy projects, projects that have been hanging around on their list for 30 years or more, they're finally feeling like they're seeing the end to that list, and I think, starting to think about, okay, what are, you know, what are the next wave of significant investments that we need to look at? And, you know, when we talk with them about this project, they are not thinking this is, you know, something they're trying to get done in two years, or this is something that, they know that we need to start planning now and working with our communities to reach consensus on, because it will take 20 years for it to, you know, reach fruition. Sorry, I don't mean to be, sound too pessimistic for, to people, but if people are hoping for something faster, but, but I think just, they're trying to be realistic that they need to start planning now for the long-term, and that's, you know, really what this is about also. And I don't, I think they're trying, they have, there, there are no preconceived notions about what will happen. I think, you know, we're all opening this public process up to, in a very earnest way, to work it out together over the next year and a half.
Well, from one of your earlier questions, what, or actually, when you were answering Kevin's about, you know, how can we best interact with you, I think this council would be very interested in being part of the conversation early on. I think the planning commission should be brought in in terms of their understanding at least this project and, and its impact for their planning.
Okay.
Roles as well, and clearly our director of planning and the city, I mean, it will impact us greatly, so we do want to be part of the conversation and hopefully decision-making in terms of, you know, what the recommendations are, because they will impact us.
Yeah, no, and I, I think, you know, talking again with Vtrans, it was very clear to me that, you, without South Burlington being part of the decision-making, there won't be a decision. And so I think they're very interested in that. Sorry, you mentioned the planning commission. When do you think I could get on their agenda?
After IZ is over.
I don't know if I'm joking about that.
After IZ, yeah.
July, realistically?
You could be with us before that, though.
Yeah, you guys are great, thank you.
Can we talk, Charlie, about how we can develop kind of a structured plan on, on gaining those kind of perspectives from the council, from the planning commission, from the public?
And the public, yep.
So we can have a really good, robust role in this.
Yeah, thank you.
The SBBA.
I'll talk to you about that tomorrow.
Chat about it, yeah.
Could I add that...
I'm happy to meet with any group that wants to, you know, dig into this a little bit more, happy to go to...
Speaking about meeting with groups, for the rest of you, I had a class out at the commission's office two weeks ago, something like that. It was a group of students who study environmental issues, sustainability issues, and so last week was their report, and they took it to a more worldly perspective, and I think from the students' perspective, the problem in the future is really not going to be fossil fuel pollution, because the evolution to electric vehicles is happening faster than people would have imagined. The problem is going to be pollution from too many vehicles, period, and the students say, "Well, then we need to get people out of their vehicles." And so the students weren't very enthusiastic about adding lanes, interchanges, pavement. They were more all about alternative forms of transportation. They are excited about the potential to put a bridge, like we've talked about, a pedestrian bike bridge. I think they'd like to see something like that in the next couple of years, but I'm not sure that can happen. But I think as you work through all this, I think we do have to keep a very keen eye towards how do we reduce vehicles, not worry too much about polluting vehicles, because that's going to, that's going to work its way out, and alternative forms of transportation perhaps, and ways to move people and bicycles more safely. And I think that's what the students, and they showed examples from around the world where things like that are taking place successfully, as well as not so successfully, and, and I think we need to be on, on board with that.
Really, if not next year, but I'd really like to see us make public GMT free.
Yep.
Eventually.
So, and I think that brings up one other interesting point that I think we've been making in, in other forums, is really the importance of dealing with a dynamic future, right? So, you know, we're, we're testing out some possibilities with some assumptions about future, but knowing that we're wrong, right? Like, like what we have there, like those numbers about, I'm, I can 100% certain that that number's wrong. I don't know by how much and in what direction, but I know it's wrong. And so the other part of this, from a process standpoint that we've been talking about, is setting up a system and recommendations at the end of this that can respond to changing dynamics. You know, maybe the millennials are really going to shift the, the percent of people, you know, we have 80%, 85% of people drive alone, you know, to work right now. Maybe they're really, that generation is really going to shift that in a meaningful way, and we don't need the capacity. So we're, I think, going to try to set this up at the implementation plan type of stage to just keep monitoring what's happening and, you know, not make investments that we don't really need, and make sure we're making those at the, at the right time.
Or make investments that are just going to exacerbate the problem of traffic rather than, rather than reduce that problem.
Yeah.
I mean, we build, we, you know, you build it, people will come. We build more roads, more people will use them. Build more interchanges, more people will use them. There may be some fixes that are needed, but to handle current and immediate capacities, but looking forward into the future, we've got to, we've got to come up with, I think the students are right, we've got to come up with alternatives and, and really push those.
And so then I'm going to say something that you may not like. So, but every time I've answered that question for 30 years of my career, the answer to that is really densification, right? It's the, the way you change the percentages of the population that can walk, bike, and use transit is by increasing density where you can do that, you know, in our urbanized areas.
Well, I think we bought into that.
No, no, I know you have. That was a joke. City center's been great.
Okay, I missed the humor, I'm sorry.
But it's, but it's not a popular, you know, thing, density's a, you know, a four-letter word almost. And so, you know, I think it's hard to think about that of, you know, in our urbanized area, if we're really going to have a future with different mode choice, you know, and we had a conversation, I think, about train, how come we can't get a train?
We do.
You know, and well, you know, you've got to have a lot, a density, you need a lot of people going from, you know, one place to another to use a train. So those things is what, you know, we need to focus on the land use pattern, you know, the transportation system is serving the land use. And I hear the point, I think we're trying to be very careful in this to make sure that the transportation system doesn't drive land use in a very unhealthy way.
Right. And that's, that's another point to think about too, is where our employment centers are. And, and also, have you ever, you know, modeled out just how big Chittenden County could be and still function? Is that something that's, I mean...
Built-out of Chittenden County?
Yeah, yeah, just to, to how many, I mean, because, I mean, we have megatopolises, you know, I grew up in one, and it's, it's not all they're cracked up to be. And, and so I, I think, you know, there...
There are trade-offs in every scenario.
There are definitely trade-offs. I mean, there are wonderful things, but there's also a lot of negatives. And I think, you know, looking at developing Franklin County might be a good solution too. I think that, you know, making sure that there are enough jobs for people, you know, who want to have their tract of land until it becomes too expensive, just like here because of economic development, you know, that, I think that there is real wisdom in having those employment centers scattered throughout where people live.
Yeah, no, there are different, you know, even if you look at that map, you see, you know, villages, and you think, each, each town wants to have some part of the pie in some center, and, you know, our plan does support that, even though if you looked at it purely from, purely from a mode-traffic standpoint, you would have all the development in one big city, you know, where everybody could walk or bike, right? Now, that's not really a reality.
That's, where do you see that? Except for in Denmark?
It's not a reality.
In Amsterdam.
It's not a reality.
Right, okay.
Not a reality. But I'm just talking about, you know, depends on what problem you're trying to solve. So, anyway, thank you so much, sorry for getting more full...
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie and Elena.
John, stay tuned.
John?
If you can take some comments on this presentation.
If they're brief, sure.
Brief. Thank you.
I'm John Dinklage, and as Charlie said, South Burlington really is the epicenter of the problems on I-89. There are three projects included in their study that are in our backyard, two of them are in South Burlington. The simplest one is the northbound entrance ramp onto I-89 from Kennedy Drive behind this building. The second one is exit 12B. Over the years, this council has given conflicting, contradictory direction to the CCRPC and the MPO, and this has significantly impeded their planning and their ability to move forward with long-term, you know, strategic planning. And I urge you to clearly, unequivocally, and formally support the construction of 12B. And David, this isn't a question of build it and they will come, this is a question of redistributing the traffic that we already have...
Well, that's what I said.
...to improve our quality of life.
That's what, that's what I, that's what I said, there are some projects...
Third point is one that is really not under our control, but was just mentioned, the Champlain Parkway. All of these things, if constructed, will help take significant traffic off Williston Road and out of the Dorset Street-Williston Road intersection. Please support them for our quality of life.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Peter, yeah?
No, you can...
Come up, no, come up, if you're going to, they, we're having some sound issues, so it'd be good in front of a...
Peter Taylor, I just want to, you know, what, what was just said, I attended a meeting in Williston with these folks the other night, and it was interesting, similar to here, and I agree, we need to move forward with, with an exit in that area, of more full exit.
Those two exits, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Roseanne?
Well, okay.
We're making this a public hearing.
Yeah, I guess. So Roseanne Greco, resident of South Burlington, and I disagree. I, I think that you've got to think about the future and modes of transportation in the future, jobs in the future, whether more jobs will be done telecommuting and not actually needing to go from a physical place to another physical place. This is planning for where we are now, this is not thinking about where we are in the future. If, if we're still struggling with sustaining what we have now, we just said 70% of the money is going to sustain the infrastructure now, and only 30% is for new stuff, then how in God's name are you going to sustain new stuff if you have a difficult time sustaining what you have? Now, that's from a sustainability concept. Let's think about the neighborhoods, and, and we talked about this for years and years on the council about what a 12B would do to the neighborhoods it's going through. They'd be gone. So talk about quality of life, you know, forget about the people living off of Heinsberg Road on either side, or wherever you decide to put the 12B, is that those neighborhoods are gone. Now there's a major intersection, a major road going through their neighborhoods, what's their quality of life? So if you're going to open this up to the public, invite the people who live in the areas that you're thinking of destroying in order to put another interchange intersection going from point A to point B, because things are going to be destroyed. And having lived in metropolitan areas for most of my career, if you build it, they will come. Look at the beltways around major cities, they've expanded them, expanded, expanded. Did it help the traffic at all? It has not, it's only gotten worse, all right? I'll bet you years ago, people were saying, "If we just put the interstate in, we'll take care of all the traffic," right?
Well, we ran into the Cirque Highway. 200 million sounds cheap now, doesn't it?
Well, just take care of all the traffic. Sounds good, right? I'm just saying, consider the environment, consider the people's lives before, and I hear from the people first, especially the ones whose neighborhoods will be gone.
Well, I think that really was Charlie's point.
We need to have South Burlington understanding and.
Oh, yeah, because it's, you're.
Well, at some, at one point, there was a thought of going into our technology park and not onto Heinsburg Road. Is that now back to Heinsburg Road for 12B?
Well.
That's to be discussed.
They should be the first people.
Attend the next meeting.
I got it.
It's in Winewski, yeah.
Everybody, attend the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Babysit.
Freedom that, that might read that out for me. Okay, thank you. Item nine, consider and possibly approve the social service funding allocation. So, we did get.
You had $13,000? 15?
No, it was 15,000, is there not?
15, yeah. And the allocations that you, you had are the ones from last year?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I, I basically wanted to get that information back to you so you could see what you did last year.
Right.
Because, because we've only had $15,000 in there in the last couple of years, we didn't do any solicitations. But I did forward to you.
Right.
Five that we received anyway. It's not critical that we take action tonight. If you want to, you can, so we warned it as such, but we at least want to begin having the conversation about what we, what the council might like to do with the social service funding for this, for this current fiscal year, for 2020.
Yeah, I, I was personally lobbied by STEPS and Domestic Violence to increase their, our contribution to them, just so you know.
Uh-huh.
I understand that need, you know, but I.
By how much?
I think 500. Or, or we, we used to be at 3,000 for them?
But we give it to the Aneth Fund, I'm curious?
We're at two. We used to, we used to give them a little more, I can't remember.
Yeah, we had talked about that. The person you talked to, is that so?
The Aneth Fund that we established.
Was it the Mumba?
Yes.
Yeah.
Was the person that I talked to, what, pardon?
Did she specify where that money should go?
No, I think it was for STEPS directly, not that fund.
Well, STEPS is going to administer that fund, are they not?
So, I mean, if.
So, we could, if we wanted to give them money, we could focus it on that if we wished, but it still would be a little bit more. And the, but you, you.
How much were we going to give to the, to that fund?
Well, we hadn't.
We hadn't decided.
We hadn't decided a dollar figure, except we've been promoting, you know, these forums and education and helped create the Aneth Fund, so it seems like that would be a logical nonprofit to support with, with those dollars. I'm not necessarily interested in taking away any money that we already have allocated. I guess I'd be a little, and I certainly would think we would want to support the food shelf to the tune of 2,000 bucks. So, that gets us up to 15,000. We just saved some money on the contract for, the contracted, I can't remember what it was. It cost some, I'm sorry.
The mapping project, the mapping.
For the mapping, yeah. So, there we have, we could filter or pilfer 2,000 bucks for that if you want to. I, I don't know, it's just a thought. I mean, it wouldn't.
This is your prerogative.
Yeah.
Can, can I ask, did, did you start a charitable contribution program among the employees last year?
Yes.
Was that successful, in your mind, united away?
We haven't, we haven't received anything from them in terms of a report.
Oh, you don't, you don't know?
So, we don't actually know who.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it was overwhelming.
Okay.
But I know that, that certain people did contribute.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what's your pleasure? Do you want to talk, decide on this tonight so we can check this off the to-do list?
I think the allocation as it is is fine.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
And I would add 2,000 to the food shelf.
Do you want to add the 2,000 to domestic violence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, in addition to, we have 2,000 going to STEPS to end domestic violence already. Do you want to specifically direct that to the Aneth Fund, or do you want to increase that so that a certain amount goes into the Aneth Fund?
I would increase it by 500 to the Aneth Fund.
Yeah, if we have that, yeah.
Okay.
So, we'd give 15,000 and 500 dollars this year.
That's a rounding error, right?
Oh, yeah. Don't say that in front of Tom.
Okay, so, we'll add an additional 500 to the Aneth Fund, so the total contribution for FY this year, right, 20?
20, that's correct.
Yeah, is, will be 15,500. You okay with that, Dave?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Wait for Tom to come back or not?
Well, he can, he can vote later, can't he? Can he add his vote later? Let's just move along.
Okay, let's just go.
It's 20 and 9. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll keep it open, Sue, so Tom can, thank you.
He's coming, here comes.
All right, good. Okay. Council discussion about the status of the Natural Resources Committee and review and possibly amending its charge. Tom, would you like to vote to add $500 more to the Aneth Fund?
Yes, my apologies.
That's okay. So, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you. So, now we're moving on, and we have.
We have a draft.
A draft of a Natural Resources and Conservation Committee. This was the thought of kind of keeping alive open space and adding that more clarity, I guess, to the Natural Resources Committee to embrace and potentially generate some warm bodies to serve.
We have some, we have four stepping up here.
Tom?
Dave is on the Natural Resources, and he's in the hallway. I know he wanted to be part of this, I'm just.
Okay, go get him.
There's a typo in, or not even a typo, it says town rather than city.
Cities, yeah. So, what's your, I mean, do you like this sort of expansion of Natural Resources and Conservation Committee?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And looking at the missions and duties with, with the typo corrected, so it's the cities, are there, what's, are there any thoughts on this? Thanks, very good.
I just want to hear from Dave if he had anything to say.
I think he wanted to talk about the responsibilities of members, right? And the time it takes?
I thought, you know, you guys are doing that, I don't have, I've read it, I saw a couple, they're like you're talking about typos and stuff or whatever.
Uh-huh.
I didn't think that was where I was really, you're creating a body, and I appreciate your asking, but I don't, our committee is not a mess, that I know of. So, I mean, we can't met, meet and say anything. I'm just here as an individual, I'm not here.
Okay.
Yeah, because the committee is, right now, doesn't exist.
Doesn't have enough people to exist.
And I don't exist because I'm on leave of absence.
So, we'll adopt this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
If I could, I just wouldn't, whoever drafted, I thought did a great job.
Okay, yeah, I did too. I thought it really captured what we wanted, so Ashley knows what she's doing. Thank you, Ashley. So, a motion to approve is on the table, a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? So, the one amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We'll thank her for doing this, because I think this really heads that committee in the right direction in a way that will really be helpful.
And we now, in addition to the applicant tonight, we have three additional applicants now for the newly constituted committee.
Oh, good, were they from the open space community?
I know one of them, and that person was not, but the others may be.
There's been some outreach.
Good.
Specifically, my husband has gone to the South Burlington Master Naturalist class.
Oh, okay, right.
And spoken to the members of that class, and.
Okay.
They're excellent candidates.
So, would we like to, is this person here? Yes. Okay, so let's interview Jessica Grillo, or Jessica Lynn, do you go by both names?
Jessie.
Jessie, okay. And then, we'll discuss getting more applications. Okay.
I've been in a lot of situations, but I've never been interviewed with a conference before.
And on TV, so the whole world, you know? You can get it, send a clip to your mom or something, you know? I've been on TV. Let's see, so I haven't read this because we, it wasn't in the packet, so I apologize, I just want to.
Do you know when the Natural Resources Committee meets? Do you have a?
Oh, I, I think it was the second Tuesday or second Wednesday, is that right?
The first Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
I'm sure it's going to come up, so you'll see it soon. Because I'm out there. I'm, first off, let me say, I'm really encouraged of what you guys just did in adopting the new strategy and the new organization. It's, it's an exciting time to be on the committee, and I hope I get appointed when they come, come up, April or May.
Well, I thought you'd resigned.
No.
No.
Oh, just temporarily?
Leave of absence.
Oh, leave of absence, I'm sorry, okay.
And that was because of health and mental health and physical health. But it is an exciting time, and I look forward to being on the committee and being a participant in whatever role. The time commitment, the probability, looking at the past, has been very hard to get the committee to meet more than once a month. But there has been good work groups. So, I would suggest to any applicant that there be a meeting a month, and it bounces around on a Wednesdays, and as it gets a whole new configuration of people, that's where that's going to land. But I think somebody ought to be interested and passionate about being on a group, and they ought to be willing to spend the time to go to at least one committee and probably one work group, or maybe two committee meetings. So, that would be just my guess.
Okay, thank you. Does that sound doable to you?
That sounds doable to me.
Okay. And you're passionate about natural resources?
I am.
And open space or conservation, I guess it is?
Yeah, I mean, most of my, my whole career has been around sort of the intersection of social science and environmental science, so I just moved to South Burlington about five years ago, and I've been in front of this master naturalist program and learning what a rich natural ecosystem there is here that you, some of it, some of what is under your feet, you would never know without understanding some of the natural history behind it. Definitely a rich heritage.
Great. Have you ever served on other committees?
Well, not within a city, so most of my work is actually international, so yes, I've served on lots of committees, but mostly with international standard systems or multinational companies, that kind of thing, but around sort of sustainability standards and developing sustainability strategy and policy and monitoring and evaluation, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, my, I always joke that my body is in one place and my head is somewhere else completely, another country, so I'm looking forward to having my head and my body be grounded in one place, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, where did you live before here?
I was in Washington DC area for about eight years.
Sounds kind of like.
Yeah, eight years trying to get out.
Okay. So, when you join a committee, how do you see your role, or do you, do you have specific skills that over time you have said, oh, I'm the person who can add this to the work or composition of the committee, how it works?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of depends, sometimes it's more of a technical area of expertise, and it kind of depends on what the committee needs. Sometimes it's more of a, I tend to focus a lot on systems, so understanding how systems operate and then bringing, bringing sort of the different pieces together so that you can see when you press one lever, what might happen in another location. So, I tend to like to bring in all of the different perspectives from different people and then help teams see how they all relate to one another. I guess that was, I would say that's the role if I had to generalize kind of clause.
Ever chaired anything?
No, I was in a, like a leadership committee that was a group of five people, but there wasn't a chair, actually.
Because, you know, it's a newly constituted committee, it sounds like they'll be looking for a new chair, so I was just curious, is, is leadership something you like to take on?
Yeah, I mean, I have my own consulting firm, and I, you know, I've, I mean, helped lead the part of a merger with Rainforest Alliance, and so I can, I'm, I like leadership, I like collaboration a lot, too.
Well, that's good. Well, that's probably the hallmark of a good leader. Any other questions?
Did you serve the Peace Corps?
I didn't, no.
Your background, it looks like you're just, you almost did, but.
Yeah.
You didn't have to, because you did everything else.
I came really, I came really close, actually, to doing that, but I decided to do AmeriCorps instead.
Oh, okay.
I knew I would always go into international development, so I wanted to do something that was more local. So, I worked for a land trust in, seen a Hudson, a land trust in the Hudson Valley area of New York, and I still say.
Oh, I'll bet, yeah, there's some pretty land there. Yeah, I hope you conserved a lot.
Where was the poorest company, the country that you served in? In, in this food economy group?
Oh, so it was a lot of different countries. I lived in Ethiopia for a year, I worked in famine early warning, so I did a lot of work in the Horn of Africa and Southern Africa, and for Rainforest Alliance, I mean, I've 36 countries I've been for various things, but I spent, I, I was in Ethiopia for the longest stretch of time, so about a year, traveling across, around the country and doing a lot of research for.
We have such a diverse, talented.
Really?
It is, it's really amazing. You know, people come in like you, and, and it's like, wow, you know, you didn't just grow up in South Burlington and, you know, you've been all over the world.
You know, it's funny, I was saying to my husband, it's, it's, oh, it's a little intimidating to be here because you guys have so much knowledge about this location, and I feel like I have a lot of, I've had a lot of knowledge or sort of cursory knowledge about a lot of different places, like very broad, but not super deep. So, it's, I think it's, it's really exciting to be here and working with people who know this area so well. So, I'm, I'm really looking forward to learning from people as well.
Great. Do you have any questions for us?
What's the pay?
What's the pay?
There's the census, now there's.
Patrick, what do you want to work? It sounds like, you know, I'll split a job with you, my husband happy.
Oh, I, I am curious about the relationship with the Natural Resource Committee. How does the Natural Resource Committee interact with the city council and the planning commission?
Well, one of the things the Natural Resources Committee does is work with the DRB, design, what is it?
Development.
Design, development.
Yeah, and so, that's important to us, to have that expertise and voice when they are looking at proposals. And you have the role of really, I guess, informing them. Helping them, keeping them, you know, thinking about the natural world out there and not just, let's just pave it over kind of thing. And then, we typically hear from committees once a year. Sometimes we're not very good at scheduling that, but I think that's another way you would interact with us and share what you're working on. I mean, I think the council is willing to have any committee come before us and say, what, we've been working on this, or we have a big idea, or you tasked us with this, and here's our conclusion, so that we're kept up to date with what your goals are or your accomplishments. I mean, you serve at our pleasure, so we can ask you to do things, and we do, but it's, you know, I think a nice relationship. Does that give you enough to? Does anyone else want to add anything? Does that sound pretty accurate?
Yeah, I think it was a good description. But it really is what you make it into. We have, you know, incredible volunteers on our city boards, and really, when they take initiative, we're just so happy to follow and to support and to.
Yeah, do best we can, so. It's amazing to me how much work, I was here for the last, and seeing how much work I was here for the last meeting, seeing how much work the planning commission has done. And that's primarily volunteer, inclusive people.
Not just primarily.
We have Bike and Pets sitting there, they've done an incredible amount of research.
They're all volunteers.
Advocacy for bike paths. We have the Energy Committee, we have the Recreation Parks Committee, we have amazing, amazing volunteers.
I'll have to go out to dinner.
And you have a place with all the acronyms so that I can learn that. I thought there was another language being used when I was here last time.
Oh, dear, yeah.
That just comes with time.
It will seep in.
Well, I think you can probably ask some of the members of your, of the committee to put that acronym list together, that would be helpful, probably. We should have one somewhere. Okay.
Paul has it.
Paul has one.
Paul's a good acronym.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much. I'm sorry we're running a little late and you've been cooling your heels for a while, but.
Thanks.
So, our processes, are you, do you want to discuss this anymore, are you ready to?
I think we're ready to.
I'm ready to vote on this.
You've got it on.
I'm excited about it.
Okay, so.
Move that we appoint Jesse, let me just get your last name. To the Natural Resources Committee.
We should probably call it the Natural Resources and Conservation.
Natural Resources and Conservation.
So, the CRCC?
NRCC, right?
Oh, NRCC, yeah, sorry. All right.
Thank you very much.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations and welcome.
Well, cool.
Good job, Havi.
Good job.
Yeah. So, we're down to item 13.
Almost on time.
The speed limit on Heinsberg Road and possible directions to the staff.
Which section?
No, I think it is east.
In front of my house.
Yeah, this is just for discussion purposes of beginning this dialogue and what, where you want to go with it. It's a state highway, so clearly this is a V-Trans driven kind of decision, but influencing V-Trans is.
But in front of our house, you're seriously?
Something that you can do.
Yeah, 50 miles an hour.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
People go 60 or 70.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you pull out and they're.
When the wind is out of the south at the cider mill, you can hear the wheels whining, you know? The engines and depending upon, you know, the direction and what the vehicles are, it's like listening to an interstate, sort of.
Well, I feel very strongly that, one, it's too fast now. I mean, it's kind of nutty, it says, there's a, it says 50 miles an hour in front of what used to be the apple orchard. And then, you go about 50 feet and there's another sign that has a curve in the road and it says 40 miles an hour. Then you go down a little ways and it's, you know, going south.
Van Sickleton is becoming heavily, is an intersection now. And it's got a steep incline to it, which is.
Well, and when cider mill.
The visibility is not good there either.
Are we up to three now or two? Cider Mill, two, when that road comes in, it also will have a bike lane.
Yep.
Into a state road that has had, you know, two seconds of registering, oh, I'm, I'm supposed to slow down to 40. But you will not have slowed down, in my opinion.
Your opinion counts, you're the one that lived there, lived there.
Oh, people get very angry with me when I slow down to turn into my driveway.
Too bad, for them.
They give me a finger, they beep, it's like, huh? I had my directional.
So, do you think Cheese Factory Road is where it should go back up or further south?
Well, that's another community.
Well, Cheese Factory Road is, is South Burlington, then it changes.
Beyond that, when you go, keep on 116, that's.
Well, that's in Shelburne, is it not?
Shelburne.
Shelburne and then it goes into Heinsberg, yeah.
Is that Shelburne or is it right?
Shelburne and then it gets to Heinsberg, pretty close.
What's the timeline and process for this? And I support lowering the speed limit, I've had multiple residents comment on how more and more people are biking and walking along the.
I agree.
This is dangerous how fast people go.
Why don't we just vote on it and tell them to do it, for God's sake?
There might be a process, David.
I think there would be, a traffic study would be required, we'd try to require, we'd have to work with them on that. There is a lot of discussion right now, you're talking about the southern segment, there's a lot of discussion now about from Kennedy to, to the bridge. Both north and southbound and Tilly Drive and that intersection and crosswalks and traffic lights and things like that are under discussion right now.
I'm sure, because I, I went past Tilly Drive after I picked the dog up at Happy Tales last evening. And my God, traffic was backed up in Tilly Drive as far as I could see, because there was no way people were coming out of there and going to be able to turn left easily. It was just so backlogged.
Yep.
Well, I think, and there's four different speed limits. So, I mean, it sort of slowly slows down, but I just, you're still going past homes.
So, if I'm understanding this, though, if that discussion's happening now, are you wanting to concentrate on the bridge south to the, to the city line?
To the Shelburne line.
Sure.
Yeah.
As a, as an area that you would like to have considered for modification?
What bridge are we talking about?
Interstate, the interstate highway bridge.
At Tilly Drive.
Going over, we go over the bridge then?
Yeah, from the, from the south edge of the bridge, south of it.
Old Farm Road, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And my preference would be to have it a consistent speed, so you're not going fast and slow and fast and slow.
After the 35 miles on, go to 40 and stay there all the way to the Shelburne line?
Or just stay 35.
Or 35.
I mean, there's.
35, 35 is fine. Bob wants 25.
It is a very, it is a huge shoulder on parts of that road, once you get past the Rye development, it has a very wide shoulder.
And then it has no shoulder.
And then, huh?
Then it has no shoulder.
If you're going south, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so it can take those speeds, but you are going to have a heck of a lot of housing going in there.
Yeah.
You know, and you've got Butler Farms right there in Oak Creek and I'm sure there's excess noise.
I think 35, I mean, sort of like the rest of Heinsberg Road, when you, you know, when you cross Kennedy Drive, it's 35 miles an hour from there until you get to Williston Road, because it's residential. And they even have sidewalks, so, I mean, you can safely walk there. We don't even have sidewalks.
So, what do we have to do, start with a traffic study, you think?
Well, I mean.
Two questions on the traffic study, though, is that how it works, where we would go into it saying we want it 35? Or do we conduct the traffic study and it gives us back recommendations?
I don't think there's any way this is going to happen without a traffic study.
What do they cost? And is there ways to do this so it's not entirely borne by us, or is it a pretty small amount?
I think it's probably a pretty small amount.
A thousand?
Oh, more.
Three to five, I think, is what Justin.
And V-Trans does it? V-Trans does it?
What's their route? So, we'll have to, I think the next step is for me to really get with V-Trans, Justin and me to get with V-Trans, find out what would need to be done. Let them know your interest in reducing the speed limit, perhaps a 35 all the way out, recommending, based upon continuing development in that area, current safety concerns.
The Tilly Drive intersection, because of the heavy traffic there.
Well, that's already, that's already under discussion and I think you're going to see a light.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So, really what we're talking about is from the bridge south, because that section from Tilly to Kennedy Drive is going to be discussed as part of the. And there may be a traffic study associated with that, so.
So, are we, perhaps we want to go to 35, or we want to go to 35 and we should tell them that, so there's no doubt in their minds what we want to do?
How do these work, start with that?
I, I would say, let's start, let's go, let's go that route.
Now, some people would like to have 35 north, you know, Kennedy going north from Heinsberg Road as well, because that's also a place where people cross and.
Where?
So, Kennedy Drive, just north of Heinsberg Road. I mean, not east of Heinsberg Road.
East.
Oh, east.
Going toward the airport.
Kennedy Drive is 40 the whole stretch.
Yeah.
I'm not against expressing interest in 35 across the board, I just want to yield to the expertise of Justin and people that understand traffic to come in and say with the traffic study, what would be, what would increase safety. And that's a two-phase approach and whatever that recommendation is.
Why don't we find out and then report back soon about what V-Trans would be asking for and what it might cost?
Kind of out, but it's Bob Britt as an individual, but I've had one neighbor who lives on Proudie. You're talking the south part, which I like the 35, that's great consideration. But between Kennedy and Williston Road, people trying to get across the street, because there's no crosswalks on Kennedy except in front of the church.
Except in front of the church.
I mean, excuse me, on Heinsberg Road.
Right.
So, there's not one out of Proudie and you've got 40 houses and you've got people taking the path from Mayfair and trying to get across the street to get to the high school kids. So, that section may not, should not necessarily be 35 going between Kennedy and Williston Road. Maybe that needs to, so I just want, if you're looking at that whole corridor.
Right.
Look at that.
Make it 25?
35 may be the safe, it may be okay speed, but maybe it should be 30 or 25, because that's the city center now. I mean, you're right in the city center area. So, just, just a thought.
Valid point.
And I didn't want to just, it's important from Tilly to the Shelburne border, but let's not forget about inside, so I don't watch it a whole nother. But that's personal.
Well, I think as we do, you know, more density development, it's worth thinking about what are appropriate and really pushing biking and walking and what are appropriate speed limits for our city streets? Whether it's what used to be sort of a straight-on, how you get into Burlington from the hinterlands and there weren't a whole lot of, of houses and now there are a lot, as well as, you know, there's a lot, I don't know what the, I mean, what's a speed limit in your development? Is it 25?
25, yeah.
So, that's what we typically do on our own streets in these small developments?
Yeah.
So, I mean, maybe some of those, the streets that used to be more thoroughfares need to come down because the city's changed and it's gotten more people crossing the road, kids, you know.
So, let me ask a question.
You know, really think about it as a city, sort of, not policy, but, you know, kind of how we look at roads that are right next to a lot of population.
So, you're going to ask V-Trans about what we should, the process and traffic study, et cetera? And so, they may say, yes, you have to conduct a traffic study. And Tom says, well, probably looking at five or six thousand bucks. If we think as the people who live, work here and, and manage the city, that these are the appropriate speed limits, why the heck do we have to waste the money then on a traffic study? Try and talk them out of it.
Well, David, I'm not, I'm not the former chair of the House Transportation Committee.
That was 30 years ago.
I don't think much of anything gets done without a traffic study.
Try and talk them, try and talk them out, I mean, to me, it's going to be, to me, it's going to be a waste of money. And if it doesn't come back the way we want it, then what happens?
Well, it's their road.
It may be their road, but it's our city. You know, if we want to put tolls on there to collect money from people coming in and they have, they have a right to.
We hire, get one car and one policeman and we do what some other communities do and they balance their budget.
Yeah.
Well, that's our option, is we could just enforce more on these stretches, get people to lower their speed.
Well, 50 is still too high on that stretch, though. No, my, my point seriously is, I hate to do traffic study for the, just for the sake of that's what you do. If, if that.
Checking off that box.
I mean, just checking off that box and costing us a pile of money. If we can get around it, then let's try and get around it.
Let me look into it.
And how about Dorset Street, then, if we're talking about Heinsberg Road?
Dorset's 40?
It's 35.
40 in front of my house, if I'm not mistaken.
40 down, 40 down.
40 near York's place.
40 all the way to Swift Street.
I'm fine with 40, it's just when people go 60 and hit the telephone pole and knock out the power in the whole area, but, so maybe some more enforcement on Dorset Street, but I think 40's fine, as long as that's what they actually go.
It's 40 all the way to Swift Street, if I'm not mistaken.
Sounds right.
Yeah. It's 40 all the way to Wheeler.
Yeah, Swift Street.
Yeah, Wheeler turns to 35 going north.
Okay, I will look into that and get back to you then.
Okay.
But also, but also our city center's 35, I mean, it's.
25?
No, it's 35. It's 35 on Dorset Street.
Oh, Dorset, I'm sorry, I thought you meant Market Street.
Dorset does have the recreation path all the way from Wheeler down to Nolan Farm Road. So, there are.
It's going to have a new one.
Yeah, but that's.
Eastern side, pretty soon.
That's a pretty good safety, safety net.
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
See where we go.
Okay. Sue, are you able to, we don't, we only have a couple more items.
Yeah, go ahead, that's.
Okay, thank you. January financials, Tom?
Yeah, not a lot of changes since the, the financial statements you got last month with the narratives. We're 58% through the budget now, seven months expended, the general funds sitting at 61%, with revenues 50, right at 58% with our expenses. Enterprise funds are in good shape as well, good balance there. Couple things we're watching, but we did get our latest statement from State of Vermont. Local options taxes were ahead of last year, which is, which is good, because we finished high last year. So, we're hoping that continues.
While you're on that topic, weren't we at some point going to tell them that we wanted to administer that ourselves and save a pile of money? Or have we done that already?
We can't do that.
We try.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
And we got, but there's another city, there's another city that does do it, isn't there?
Burlington there.
So, why does Burlington get to do it, then we don't?
Because they had a, they had a, their own legislatively authorized local option tax. We came in in a package with others. And the legislature changed the rules when we came in with the others.
Because they wanted.
So, there's a, there's a group of us who are the same way. Because they want, it's, it's an $85,000 fee, annual, 80, isn't it 85, roughly?
Yeah.
But that's on top of the 30% they're getting.
They get a fee on top of a slice?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, why can't we ask our legislators next year to put in legislation just for South Burlington that lets us manage our own?
Because the state wants its money.
No, we can do that, though, can't we?
We can, we can absolutely ask our legislators to, and we would, we would get the others who are in the same.
I don't care about the others.
Well, you need votes.
Yeah.
That would generate some votes.
If we got the others, we'd get.
Well, I think we need to do that, because, because if we, what'd you say, Kevin?
Maybe he's hungry.
Oh, we had good refreshments, I'm good.
Bring a cheeseburger next time.
Let's, let's remember to ask our incoming legislators right away, so it's one of the bills that comes in right at the beginning and gives us some time to work on it. But I don't see any reason we should be paying the state for something we can do.
People doing it themselves.
And the authorization could be for the other towns to do the same thing and they can decide whether they want to pursue it or not.
Right.
Yeah.
Who else is involved? Us and who?
St. Albans, right?
Oh, 13 in mind. Yeah, let's, let's give it a whirl. If we don't ask and we don't try.
Oh, I think you should ask as many communities as you think might be able to handle it.
Sure.
Or it's a lot more votes.
Or at the very least, get them to change something, you know, like give us more, right? So, either decrease the fee or increase our percentage, you know? I mean, now, those are valid requests to make.
Well, the ancillary benefit of doing what Dave's saying is that we then can verify that our businesses are.
Well, that was the other half of the question, was like, what are the businesses that contribute to that, that are in South Burlington? Just give us the list.
Yeah.
Don't give us the amount. They won't even do that.
But if there's 13 communities involved and it's like St. Albans and some others with multiple legislators, we could end up with 50 sponsors before we, before we know it and then we got a whole lot better chance of getting this through.
Governor vetoing.
No, he won't. No, he won't.
Because he needs the income.
We can, we can work on that. Get that ready for the legislature.
Yeah, let's do that.
Good, okay. Anything else?
Happy to respond to any other questions.
Are there any other questions for Tom?
No.
Our firebrand doesn't have anything else? Okay. Item 15, reports from councils on committee assignments. We sort of got the report from GMT, we didn't have a airport, we had the airport planning thing.
I would like us to thank the IZ committees, the TDR and the open space committees. I mean, I, I know how much time my committees members gave and, and I think took, taken a lot of heat.
Can you put that in the minutes and thank them for their diligent, diligent work and time? Is that what you're saying?
Well, or, or just a certificate of thanks, you know, I mean, this was.
Yeah, barbecue would be good.
What? What did you say?
Barbecue.
Barbecue. Barbecue, sure.
Maybe, maybe at Bikes and Bites we could have a special, smaller catering thing for us.
Something to go redeem at the Bikes Place.
Or, or have a one truck dedicated, you know, or whatever, I don't know.
To the ones we love, yep.
You got to do something to show the appreciation to both the IZ committees and everybody else.
Well, I mean, we had a recommendation tonight to, you know, officially sort of accept and approve of whatever the open space committee meeting or, or report, you know, to really give it some, since there has been some negative comments about their ability to do the work that they did.
We're going to follow up on this, right?
I hope so, yeah.
Who is doing, who needs to do the follow-up on that?
The council, right?
So, how are we going to follow up on it?
In a meeting, we have to continue our discussion.
Well, we should have it as an item.
A gender item?
What's, what's a gender item?
How do official. How to officially, you know, accept and thank the IZ committees who did their work?
Okay.
You know, so they have a little more gravitas, I guess, with the community, that they don't look at them as just a, ah, bunch of volunteers that kinda threw some stuff together.
I apologize to-
You know, to what degree we're gonna, you know, follow up on their reports, what kind of action we're gonna be taking, you know? I don't know that that's a one, one-meeting agenda item, but I think that's worth-
I'm gonna talk about that a little bit, if I could, under other business with the scheduling things, Megan, get your input on, on that issue.
Okay, item sixteen, then, convene as the South Burlington Liquor Control Commission to consider the application by Puccinella to move the location of their liquor license from one hundred Dorset Street to seventeen ten Shelburne Road.
I move that we convene as a liquor control committee, or whatever we are, to take care of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have moved that we approve the change, the change of-
Second.
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
The move that we exit out of the Liquor Control Committee, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good work.
Okay. Other business, so, the scheduling, and then, I just got, you know, an email from John Simpson, I guess maybe you've got it, too? He is, two people that they, they lost two people, and he, I guess they recruited or spoke to a number of people. Let me find it. Oh, he did send it to you, but it was late in the afternoon. Larry Michaels died, and Cindy Reed resigned due to workload, so they have asked Vince Balduke and Patrick O'Brien to apply. He's asking, would you be willing to waive the policy of opening membership in city committees just once a year to allow us to fill these vacancies now on our very busy committee?
And for open space, makes sense.
Uh-huh. Do we wanna advertise and get, you know, some other candidates, or are those two exactly who?
I think it's normally advertised. I think we should at least advertise.
We obligated to advertise?
We, we do whatever the council asks us to do. Typically, it's been advertised. When there are, typically, try to stay on cycle, but since you've got these openings, doing it off-cycle, we would normally advertise.
Pay money, can you just throw it into your regular city warning?
We might be able to add to our warning and do that, or our weekly announcement of what's gonna be on the council agenda.
Well, what John's saying is he's got two people that want to, that wanna participate, and it's okay with the rest of the committee members?
Well, that I don't know.
We need to interview them.
I think we need to interview them, for sure.
Patrick and Vince have been attending, too.
Pardon me?
Patrick and Vince have both been attending the meetings. I know they were both, Vince was there today.
Optics matter, I think we should warn it, and the people apply.
I agree.
Yeah, I think so.
Because sometimes you find people that we don't select, but we have an opening somewhere else, like another Sexton, perhaps.
Well, the next, your next chance to interview and appoint is gonna be probably on the sixteenth of March, so it gives us time to advertise.
Okay, well, then, let's do that.
And that's a meeting, I'm not, I'm not-
On to scheduling.
So, I've talked about the meeting next week, the joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the twenty-fifth. You have your briefing of the public on the evening of the second, the budget briefing for the public on the evening of the second, and then the election on the third, and then traditionally, you have reorganized on that Thursday after the election. So, do you wanna still try to do that? That's Thursday the fifth, I think.
You probably should.
If you're available, Thursday the fifth.
What time is the town meeting? When does that start?
Six-thirty, it's at the paper.
Six-thirty it is, okay.
Send the paper, six-thirty.
I just couldn't remember.
Seven o'clock?
Seven.
And where, that, that's where, here?
Tuttle Cafeteria.
So, so Thursday?
So, Thursday the fifth?
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Yeah, and that's usually a pretty quick meeting.
Yeah, it is. Thursday the fifth, that's it.
And where are we doing that? Here?
Yeah.
We'll probably do the warrant that night instead of town meeting, so that we don't have to interrupt that part of it.
Oh, okay, yeah, if we're gonna meet on the-
Few days, so.
So, we will warn that meeting, um, yeah, we'll warn that meeting.
At six-thirty?
At six-thirty on the fifth, we'll, we'll reorganize then.
And we'll do the warrant. Is there any other business that we need to do?
Yeah, there are a few, I think you appoint the council person-
Oh, that's right, we appoint all those people, yeah.
But a few of them.
Identify our newspaper and agree on, yeah.
Our bank.
Go the other way.
Our bank, and when we're gonna-
There's a list of things.
Meet and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in addition to that, Paul and I talked about the schedule for the IZ process. Of course, you've got the joint meeting with the, with the Planning Commission, and then, early in March, we're suggesting a meeting where you get the economic development, or the economics-
Analysis.
Analysis, thanks. Economics analysis, and also begin a discussion about what you wanna do with the reports overall. Start to make some decisions about the direction you wanna go with the results of the ID, IZ studies. Discussions about the use of different tools for conservation, evaluative processes that you wanna go through, and, and start to lay that out, and probably anticipate that there's gonna be maybe two or three probably dedicated meetings to talk about this in the month of March, maybe early April, to get to, to move toward a conclusion on things. Of course, we know the PUD process is going on in parallel to that, but there's enough information from the Open Space Committee probably to, to have a discussion about the twenty-five properties.
There may be some low-hanging fruit that we wanna talk about.
Yeah.
Yes.
So-
Absolutely. Little things that won't take time or much time.
Don't threaten anybody, right off the bat.
So, we'll try to suggest some times for that first meeting, and it would probably be the week after the election.
So, that's Mar, the week of March ninth?
Um, yeah.
And then we're scheduled the following, okay? So, are Monday nights still good?
What, March ninth?
Yeah.
Well, we could go ahead and schedule that right now, if, if you're available.
Monday, March ninth?
There's an IZ report discussion.
Yeah. You'll get the-
Six-thirty or seven?
Cost-benefit analysis, uh, March. Like six-thirty? And, and then begin to just discuss options and follow on with, from the reports.
Six-thirty to potentially eight-thirty, two hours?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that's gotta be a, for me, it's gotta be a short meeting, because we're leaving the next morning.
Are you going to Iceland?
Yeah, we're going to Iceland.
Oh, cool.
That shouldn't be.
All righty. So, any other items?
Just one real quick thing. Does this save this? I wanna thank Public Works for working on potholes on Dorset Street today, as was witnessed by my wife, so I know that it's not fun to work down in heavy traffic areas like that. Spear Street is in dire need.
What else is new?
Spear Street from, from Swift all the way to where they repaved it, it's got like Quarry Hill Road, there are some pretty deep divots. They're not always in the tire tracks, but they're close.
No, I wouldn't say they're deep divots, it's just bumpy, I mean, I do it two or three times a day.
Yeah, there are bumpy patches, which I don't mind so much, but there are two or three bad divots that, you know, somebody should scout out.
Potholes?
Yeah. And then, and then, and the other thing was signalization on Dorset Street at Trader Joe's all the way to Williston Road, right? So, there looks like there's some, some movement that's gonna start taking place on that.
Yes, wanna recognize Eli Lester Goldsmith.
Right, right, so I can't emphasize enough the importance of traffic control on that strip of Dorset Street, you know, for the commercial interests that surround that area. It really is, I mean, and I understand people's frustration, when I get caught in it, I like, you know, I just turn the radio on and I go, you know, I've got four lights to go, this is a great song, and I'll just work my way through it, you know, try not to get mad, because you don't have any choice, you know?
Make that a PSA announcement, so you're worth handling.
Well, we got a lot of lights in a short section of road.
That's for sure.
It is, it is, yeah.
Somebody pushes the crosswalk light, the whole thing, the whole thing just tumbles forward.
Yeah.
So, but, but the study that, and again, I wanna recognize Eli's willingness to support this. He and Justin are trying to schedule their first meeting, but hopefully we'll get some good analysis from a qualified engineering firm about how it can be improved. Ultimately, the light at that corner is gonna be changed out-
With Williston Road?
Uh, the corner of Garden Street, and Dorset is gonna get changed when Garden Street is completed.
The programming on the northbound left-turn entrance into the mall is the worst timed light after the lane empties, right? It still sits there and stays green and doesn't, you know, for an empty lane, for another fourteen seconds, because I've timed it myself.
Into the Hannaford Plaza?
Yes. That is a defective sensor, or it's, it's being overwritten, someone's gotta look at the PLC and figure out what's going on, because as soon as the last car turns left, it should let people go, you know?
I don't think we have that sensor, that's the problem.
Is that, there's no sensor, it's just time.
That's what adaptive signal control's supposed to bring in.
I can't believe that it doesn't have a sensor, but I guess I'll be surprised, yeah.
I'll talk to Justin about it, but I may well be wrong, but, well, I don't know.
Some, some days it's not long enough.
Well, it's good news that we're working on this, that, that Eli is kinda, his frustration has, um-
But it's an important part of the city, so it's-
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, we hoped, I mean, two years ago, it was gonna go in, and then the money got taken out, so I, we've been working on this, and he's been very patient.
Well, since we're talking Public Works, I've talked to two residents who are a little bit concerned about, they had some issues with power. One was on Royal Hill, that's the way it happens, and there were cars being, stuck in the snow, and that upper hill section where it curves.
Yeah.
Yeah, around one hundred. And also on Helen Avenue, there's a circle there, and there is a broken main or some kind of sensitive, you know, there's a cone there on, on the city-owned grassy circle, and so the plow pushed snow onto residential properties, which then, that was pretty heavy snow, and it took them a long time to dig out, the snow blower just couldn't get through it.
Okay.
So, just two things to report.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody hates the blood butter that the plows put back in the driveways, could we stop that somehow?
Right. Okay.
Well, there's a big sledding hill, and now they can't do it, so they put the sledding hill over on the residential properties.
Oh, that's bad.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for adjournment in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sure.